Rebecca, I have not asked anyone about the flag salute this week. Would you mind leading us? Yeah, but you're muted.
It's seven o'clock.
Is that, are you comfortable with that?
Yes, yes.
Thank you, sorry.
Just making sure, reading it off that you don't pull up a pre-1954 version. It's missing two words.
Two. Greg, do you know if our translators are here?
I have not seen them yet.
Let's wait another minute. Bob's here, let's wait for Dave and maybe the translators.
And now that you mentioned it, I didn't get a reply from them when I sent yesterday. So.
There was the confusion around the dates, right? Okay. All right. Oh, Joe's not here. Ford's here. Where's Joe? There he is. Well, there's his office. Okay. You good? You ready? You got all your necessary fuel? Okay. All right, I'm gonna call to order this meeting of the Newburgh School District Board of Directors. We'll start off with the flag salute and Director Pyros has graciously volunteered to lead us this evening. So whenever you're ready.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right, so tonight, our agenda's got some pretty interesting items on it. And we'll start with public comment, go into board and superintendent comments. And then we're gonna have a presentation by Keith Leonard from the city of Newburgh about the vertical housing development zone. We'll get an in-school update from Dr. Morlock, monthly financial report from Nikki. Break, then we'll dive into the student achievement report with Dr. Brown, followed by the SIA grant approval. Talk about our budget, calendar, student and athletic fees, have some OSBA convention reflections, and then go into a couple of first reads on two different policies. So, nice busy agenda. All right, and I think we have one public comment this evening. Greg, is Elaine available to be brought up?
Good evening.
Hi Elaine, go ahead, whenever you're ready.
Thank you. I'm Elaine Coskella. I'm a staff member at Catalyst High School and have been an employee of the Newburgh Public Schools for over a decade. My three children have attended Newburgh Public Schools and are all graduates of Newburgh High School, with the youngest graduating last year. I'm making public comment tonight because Director Brown's comments in the last board meeting were a reply to an email I sent to the board. Several things concerned me. My words and concerns were confusingly filtered through Director Brown's perceptions, leaving many unsure what was being said or even what was being talked about. My words were then used as a springboard for his own displeasure with another board member's comments. Lastly, he did not answer the one question I directly asked, which was for his long answer as to why he wouldn't have voted to place a bond on the last ballot. Since he addressed my email publicly in his board comments, I wanted to clarify what my concerns and comments were. This is what I wrote. "I have concerns about the political rally in the Newburgh School High parking lot. The organization, the organizers of the event did not obtain permission for the event. As board members, it seems to me ensuring policies are followed concerning the use of school district property is one of your jobs. Director Shannon, it appears, it seems you didn't agree with this. I was also perplexed and disappointed that two members, Directors Brown and Shannon, did not know there were guns at the rally. Director Brown said, 'I would like to know sometime, you know, maybe we can get a response back about the weapons thing. That would be nice to know if that took place,' and later saying, 'If there were no weapons, I don't think we should have been talking about it.' Director Shannon said, 'To the best of my knowledge, there is no actual evidence of weapons. When I had heard reports of weapons, it took me less than five minutes to find video evidence of said weapons. I did this before the board meeting, there was plenty of time. Another job of board members is to make sure you have gathered all the facts about something you will be talking about. Do your research. I want to share my opinion about the use of school property for political rallies. I agree with Director Shannon that young people should be commended for being politically active. I also agree with Chair Penner that schools are for our entire community and should not have even a hint of partisanship. I love that schools provide places where all kinds of people gather for all kinds of things. If the Republican Party, the Democratic Party, the Green Party, or any other party wants to use our facilities to meet privately, great. But if that political group has a public rally on the school grounds that cannot help but be witnessed by others using the community space, I do not think that is okay. I see a couple of problems. One, it gives the appearance of the school district endorsing whatever is going on or being said at the rally. And two, in this extremely divisive age, people who do not agree with the rally often feel unsafe or threatened or intimidated just by their inability to get away from it. After doing some research, it seems this is murky ground. I would love for the board, and here I specifically named Director Mock, to do some research into what it would take to have an enforceable policy to restrict the use of public school grounds by the public for political rallies or events. I'm totally committed to helping our youth be informed and connected with policies, and I'm totally committed to our school grounds being safe spaces for everyone, and believe public political rallies interfere with its value. This last part is about the bond. Before I read what I wrote, I want to share that Director Brown and I met via Zoom with another board member, and I had the opportunity to hear his reasons for not supporting the bond. Although I'm clearly in disagreement with his conclusions, it was good to hear his reasons, and I appreciate him being willing to meet and discuss this topic as well as others. Here's what I wrote. "It was brought to my attention at the same board meeting that two board members were against the school district bringing a bond to the community to vote on this election. I already knew Director Shannon voted against it. I was not aware Director Brown didn't vote because he was absent. Director Brown, when asked what your vote would have been about putting the bond in the ballot, you replied, 'It's a long answer, but I'll just give you the short version. I would have voted no. There's just too many things I didn't like about it,' but yeah, that's my short answer. Dave, you are my representative. I would like to hear your long answer. Let me be clear about a value I hope we have in common. I want Newburgh to have exceptional schools. I believe a good public education for everyone is foundational to society. I don't particularly like how Oregon funds schools. I don't like that it's up to individual districts to fund their own buildings and upkeep, but that is currently how it works. I would like your answer to include how you think Newburgh can have exceptional schools without this particular bond, and why you felt so strong that you didn't even want it brought before the community for them to decide. I would like to hear Director Shannon's answer to this as well. Those were my comments and questions I sent to the board and to Director Brown. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to clarify them."
Thank you, Elaine.
I wanted to apologize for putting the one minute up two minutes too early, so, the first time.
Well, and I wasn't clear on time either, so, thank you. Okay, next up we'll do board comments, and I'll just go around and call individual board members. Now, let's see, Ron, do you have any comments this evening?
No, I don't have anything to say.
Brian, do you have any comments?
I do not.
Dave, do you have any comments?
No, thanks.
Okay. Bob, any comments?
Yes, I just wanted to say that, you know, later in the meeting, we'll be getting our achievement report from Dr. Brown. You know, we've moved to comprehensive distance learning, and back in February, it was not something that anybody proposed or wanted to go to. You know, comprehensive distance learning has been a rushed and temporary tool, not a goal of any district, let alone ours. So, we're gonna see a not very surprising impact on our achievement because of moving to this distance learning model. I just want to remind folks that we will get past this, this time in our history. We will get back to a more effective educational model for our students. It's something that has been a tremendous burden on students, on teachers, on families, and our achievement is gonna show that. But I also do want to remind folks that there are things that our students are learning that we don't have tools to measure yet. You know, we've talked a lot in my time on the board about preparing 21st century learners, and we have students now who can toggle between tabs while they're on a Zoom meeting and then present their screen and do technical things that real world, you know, the, the old saw of, you know, kids need to learn how to balance their checkbooks, because it's important that they have real-world skills. Well, I would, I would put forth that knowing how to navigate in a digital world is as important as balancing a checkbook, and it's something that we have second graders that can smoothly do now. So while that does not make up for the loss of our preferred model of education, I do want folks to remember that there are benefits and that our teachers and our families are doing fantastic work trying to make comprehensive distance learning as effective for, for all students as possible.
Thank you. Rebecca, do you have any comments this evening?
Yes, I do. Last night I was able to go to the first Mountain View Middle School Latinx parent meeting where they were shown how to navigate student view, how to find their students' grades and their missing assignments, and just was there as a resource to the Latinx community. And it was attended by seven parents. This is the first meeting. And so that's just a great beginning, and there were great questions asked, and they even had on the Mountain View Middle School website some of the instructional videos done in Spanish for parents to be able to go back and look at, at how to navigate student view and Google Docs and all that too. So, I, my hat's off to Terry and her team for working this out.
Thank you. Okay, I've got a little bit of a statement here. November is Native American Heritage Month, and Native American Heritage Month was established to honor and recognize Native Americans as the first people of this nation and to celebrate their cultural heritage and integral importance to our past, present, and future. I suggest that everyone visit Native Land App site where you can enter your address and learn more about the native tribes that called this area home long before any of us did. My address is on the southern boundary of an area in which the Atfaluute tribe lived. The Atfaluute tribe was a division of the Kalapuyan family, whose earliest seats were around the hills of Forest Grove and the shores and vicinity of Wapato Lake, and they're said to have extended as far away as current-day Portland. They're now on the Grand Ron Reservation and number about twenty. Twenty. That tribe has long given up their native customs and little is known about their mode of life. Just this last week, I learned that the Oregon Department of Education has an entire department dedicated to improving the outcome of native students. The Office of Indian Education works to support native students and tribes through advocacy, research, communication, and policy establishment. They also educate and inform policymakers on the importance of honoring native peoples' culture and educating students statewide on the heritage and history of the native peoples of Oregon. In my written statement, I've included a link to the Office of Indian Education's website, and on their website, you will find a variety of resources, including professional development and information regarding Senate Bill 13, which is the tribal history, shared history, along with some great reading lists. Right here in our own backyard, Shempui State Park is also a great location to learn more about the native peoples of this area, and the Oregon Historical Society has tons of interesting research and history on the people who inhabited this area. So I encourage all of us to honor our region's native people by learning more about the history and cultures of the people who called this area home. All right, with that, we'll move into superintendent comments. Whenever you're ready, Dr. Morlock.
All right, thank you. Actually, today's gonna be very short. I know we have a full agenda. I did want to wish everyone a safe and happy Thanksgiving on Thursday, and then, of course, on Friday, the Native American Heritage Day, something that's been in law for many years. I also wanted to mention one tribe, Brandon, that you didn't mention, that I had learned about just a little while ago when I took a job in Yam Hill County, about the Yamel indigenous folks who lived here many, many years ago. And so, so many of our names, and I put this in our, my superintendent update for last week, so many names of places and things that we all go to in Oregon, of course, named for the tribes of native people. So, thank you for the update that you gave before. We are nearing the end of November, which is hard to believe. I think that in these next few days, we all need some time to rest and to reflect. You know, I just, I have to give a huge amount of thanks to our staff who's been working exceptionally hard, and that includes every single staff member, who, some of them have been totally reassigned to new jobs, some of whom are doing two or three different kinds of jobs. I want to thank our community. We've had an incredible amount of support from different groups in the community trying to figure out how they can plug in and help out kids and help out families to get through this stuff. I want to thank the adults who are working with their kids. I, myself, and a few other staff members and board members as well, who have kids at, at doing comprehensive distance learning. You all know what I'm talking about. It's really hard, and it doesn't matter if you're the superintendent of schools or not, it's still a really challenging job. So I want to thank every adult out there who's working with school-aged children. This is a big job, and, and I, I just want to honor the kind of work that you're doing. And then all the community organizations and all the support that's coming in, and then, of course, to the students who I know are going through something that none of us as adults expected to put you through, and we hope that you are doing your best and that you're finding ways to find joy. I know it's, it's hard, especially as it gets dark and there's a little bit less daylight out there. So I hope in the next few days that all of us here in this virtual room and across our community spend some time to, to recharge. I know that everybody here probably needs a good break. It'll be a smaller group of people most likely in your homes, and so just take that time to, to rest and reflect. Again, thinking about our Native American peoples who were here before us, thinking about your family, the friends that you love and enjoy, and also maybe celebrate a little bit all of the hard work that everyone here has been doing over the last several months. So with that, I'm just gonna say thank you to everyone, and that's the end of my comments. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Let's move on to our consent agenda. I'd like to highlight a couple of donations we've received. Anthony Trejo, $1,000 to the NHS Girls Soccer Team, and the Oregon Sports and Family Chiropractic, $500 donation in kind of a physical therapy table. And those are just great reminders that even in this time where we maybe feel isolated, our community partnerships are going strong. With that, I would entertain a motion.
I move that we approve the consent agenda as presented.
I second.
The motion is a second. Is there any further discussion? Okay, all is in favor, please raise your hand. Passes unanimously. Okay, let's move on to reports and presentations. Let's welcome Keith Leonard from the Newburgh City to talk about our vertical housing. Keith, are you available?
And Patrick Davenport as well, is from the city planning office as well.
Thank you, Patrick.
Yes, I am available, and hopefully my audio holds up and everything's clear. So, yeah, I'm here to present, and Patrick's here for, I guess, some support. He's having some connection issues, but he may chime in as well. So, yeah, let me get to sharing my presentation here. And there you go. Can everybody see that?
Yes. Good to go.
Okay, I'm gonna shrink this down. Okay, so my name's Keith Leonard. I am an associate planner with the city of Newburgh. Patrick is our planning manager for the department. So tonight, we're gonna present to you the Vertical Housing Development Zone program. We've presented this to other taxing jurisdictions. Only ones that we have left is the school board here tonight and Yam Hill County Soil and Water and PCC. So we made presentations, and the purpose of this presentation is to give you an idea. At the end, we will ask for just a generalized thumbs up, thumbs down. It's not a formal vote, but we just want to see if there is some support for the program. So where does this all come from? City of Newburgh has a downtown improvement plan. This plan is focused on making our downtown a knockout. Pedestrian-friendly, fun places to go, places to work, eat. It's got a lot of that now, and we want to make it better. And then on pages 54 and 55 of the Downtown Improvement Plan, it gives a variety of economic development tools. One of these tools is a Vertical Housing Development Zone program. So what is a Vertical Housing Development Zone program? It's created by state statutes. It enables cities and counties to reach an agreement with the taxing jurisdictions on a 10-year partial property tax exemption for new mixed-use development and redevelopment of property. So if you had, say, a two-story building that didn't have residential up on the second floor, that's something that they could, could develop and could fall under this program. Vertical housing development zones can be a single tax lot or many adjoining lots. In the case of the city of Newburgh, we're looking at our central business district, which is where we want to see this sort of development. Why support developing a Vertical Housing Development Zone program? Well, we want to have one heck of a central business district, and these mixed-use buildings do a lot of good in the downtown. They, they provide residence down there, and then they provide additional commercial uses. And what you see with the surrounding properties is a positive spin-off. You see those properties gaining in their values, and in turn, the county's tax base as a whole increases. And would these people live in downtown? We sure would like to have them working. If we can have some live-work folks, that's, that's a wonderful thing. And then by having more residents in the downtown, we'll have more people supporting our businesses. And if, they really need it at this point, especially the services. So, these buildings, these mixed-use buildings create a long-term community wealth. So, it's a partial tax abatement. It's for a limited period of time. And what happens after that time is that the full taxing benefits of that building would go to the taxing jurisdictions. And we want to have walkable neighborhoods, so having the people living and working in the downtown area takes cars off the road, and it's good for, for our world. So for market rate housing, there is a potential for a 10-year tax abatement. This would require that the first floor of the building is commercial, and the second floor and up is residential. So for each residential floor, it provides for a 20% temporary tax abatement. So one floor residential, 20%, two, 40%, three, 60%, all the way up to four, 80%. That is the max that you're going to see for an exemption on the building. And I should also point out that market rate is only a tax exemption that's applicable to the building. There is an affordable housing aspect to it. It's only for the land, and then again, it has that 20%, 40%, 60%, 80% for a given number of residential floors. In our research, we talked to different taxing, or different governments within the, or cities within the Portland metro area, including Tigard and Beaverton. They haven't seen this part of the program utilized. They've only seen the building part, so. And here's the Vertical Housing Development Zone boundary. This is our downtown. I'm gonna start up by the Cultural Center. That's, that's Sherman Street. It jots down to the frontage lots along Hancock, then goes back up to Sherman Street and follows the railroad tracks down to the frontage along First Street, and then it bounces further down on Grant Street to the frontage properties along Second Street, where it shoots down Fifth Street there. That includes the Public Safety Building, back up to the frontage lots on Second Street. And then the eastern boundary is River Street up to the university. There are a couple of university lots that are within this. Along Sheridan Street, it travels and it bounces back down to the frontage lots on Hancock, and we're back home to the Cultural Center. I would like to point out that there's a purple area there. This is a district that we do not yet have. It's going to be a craft industrial district. We're working with the property owners and the business owners. What we'd like to do is have kind of hand, hands-on uses, you know, where people in the community or people visiting the area can go see crafters work, maybe partake in, in some of the activities. We want to make this, this kind of a gritty, new, new place for the, the city. And development opportunity sites within our central business district. So Leland Consulting Group provided us with this analysis. It was part of a displacement analysis I'll cover on the next slide. They identified 13 potential development sites, which encompass about 4.71 acres, and they have a tiered system. So the most easily developed properties would be at tier one, and the ones that are more difficult to develop would be the, the tier threes. So part of the state statute requirement is that you have to consider the residents that are within the downtown at this point. So we hired Leland Consulting Group to take a look at this. They provide us with an analysis. It's in your packet, complete analysis. Their analysis determined that there was a low likelihood that current residents would be displaced as a result of the proposed Vertical Housing Development Zone program. There's a limited number of, of properties, and so that, that was their analysis. And you do have the full analysis to, to read through in your packet. We wanted to provide you with a model, because we can talk about the percentages and all this sort of thing, and it doesn't really bring to light the real world or the real world program and how it would impact the, the taxing districts. So we looked at the building at first in College Street. This is called the Union Block Building. It is, in fact, a mixed-use building with commercial on the first floor and residential up on the second floor. We had to make some assumptions with this model. So we're starting with bare ground. There's not a building there. Then we use the 2019 real market value for that actual building, which is about $1.68 million. The real market value for the land is about $278,000, and after the building is constructed, we are projecting about a $2,000 post-construction increase to that value. Annually, we're, we're predicting about a 3% annual increase in the, the value. This would be on the improvement values for market rate units. This is a market rate model. It's not an affordable housing model, given that nobody in the Portland metro area has, has utilized that part of the program yet. So Yam Hill County Tax Assessor looks at mixed-use buildings as one for one taxing amount. So we divided that, the value of the, the property, this $1.68 million or the building currently, and we divided that between the floors. So it and we divided that between the floors. So it'd be about $840,000 for the first floor, $840,000 for the second floor and any residential floors above that would also have the $840,000 amount added to it. So here's the models. We utilize your levy amount. So once that that building is constructed, we've had have about a $1.6 million building. Estimated tax collected with abatement would still be $70,000. Estimated tax abatement for the years one through 10 would be about $14,000. First year baited amount would be about 1,200 and then the estimated total tax collected for years 11 through 20. This is at a point where there is no more abatement. That that program has expired. So then the full benefit of a building that may not have been built without a little bit of help would come back to the taxing jurisdictions in the amount of about $113,000. Three-story model, we're at a 40% temporary tax abatement. Estimated value for this building would be about $2.5 million. Tax collected with abatement for years one through 10 and that this is even with the abatement would be still be about $77,000. Estimated total tax abatement for years one through 10, $43,000. That first year abated amount that you would be not collecting would be about $3,700. And the estimated total tax collected with the kicker, no more abatement would be about $162,000. And these are probably less likely to be seen in Newburgh. We do have a three-story building that was constructed on Second and Edwards. That's sort of a mixed-use building. There's a hairdresser in the first floor. And then above that is residential, but not a lot of commercial in that one. So the likelihood of seeing a four or five-story mixed-use building in the downtown probably unlikely at this point. So for a four-story building, we'd be looking at about $3.3 million value. Estimated tax collected even with abatement would be $70,000. Estimated total tax abatement for years one through 10 would be $86,000. First year abatement amount would be about 7,500 and then the kicker years 11 through 20, you'd get about $210,000 coming into the school district. And estimated, here's we here we are at the 80% temporary tax abatement. You have a building now that's about $4.2 million. Estimated tax collected with the abatement for years one through 10 would still be $48,000. Estimated total tax abatement for years one through 10 would be about $144,000. Again, the same 80% partial partial tax exemption. And then for years, the first year of abatement amount that you would be giving up would be about $1,200. And then for the kicker years, years 11 through 20, no, no tax abatement. This the district be getting almost $259,000. So where are we at at this point? So we're going around at this point, we're presenting to the taxing jurisdictions. Just to give you an idea, we did send out written material, but we wanted to be able to actually talk to you. So this is a kind of informal presentation. We're not not asking for a definitive support or rejection of the program, but we would like to get some idea if this is is something that the school district would would support. So once we go to all the taxing jurisdictions, we'll be going back to the planning commission and presenting the findings that we've gotten from the taxing jurisdictions. And then the more formal part of this program, we'll be sending out a letter. This letter has to be sent out. It's by it's within the state statute. Sixty days before the council would would make any sort of decision on this. So we you'll you'll get a chance to to give a formal yes or no. And then we'll present that to the city council and then the city council will make the final decision after hearing what the taxing jurisdictions have to say. And we hope the vertical housing development zone would be completed by spring 2021. We really need the taxing jurisdictions to seriously consider this because the more taxing jurisdictions that don't buy into it, the less likely this program is going to help any sort of economic development in our downtown. And we do have formal support already provided to us by Tooleton Valley Fire and Rescue. And at this point, that ends my presentation and I'd be happy to take your questions.
How does this reduce property tax affect our the property taxes of our bond money that we just approved?
Well, it wouldn't. It wouldn't affect anything to do with the current tax amounts. This is almost like a tax increment financing in which you take a snapshot at a given period of time. The bond is already in place, so it shouldn't affect any of that. And then it's the increased value from that point in time in the future that is then abated. But I don't think it would have an effect on your bond measure at this point. We're still, it's going to be spring 2021 before we even get any sort of formal decision by the council.
Would it affect the other property taxpayers that are paying regular amount on the bond? Would it increase their taxes?
And not that I'm aware of. These like mixed-use buildings, whether there's a program or not, have the effect of increasing property values, surrounding property values. So in turn, the taxing jurisdictions generally get a benefit from seeing these sorts of buildings constructed, but I don't think so.
All right.
Keith, I was wondering, you know, the way school funding works in Oregon, you know, the taxes, the property taxes that go for education don't flow to us directly. They go to the state and then come back to us on a percentage basis per student. So the actual tax abatement that folks get would have a very minimal, almost negligible impact on the the district. But I was wondering, does this abatement apply to construction excise taxes or is it just on the property taxes?
Just on the property taxes.
Okay, then it then it really would have almost no impact on our budgeting or on, you know, taxes of folks other than the property owners who applied for this vertical housing development. Yeah, and I'll say, you know, as a resident of Newburgh, I love the idea. I think anything we can do to promote, anything the city can do to promote that kind of development would help make Newburgh a more vibrant place. You know, the small amount of revenue lost, I think would be offset by the increase in commercial activity and other revenue generating things for the city. So I'm excited about this concept.
Great, thank you.
Keith, do you hear models? Talk about how many children would be living in the new housing? What is the per-floor estimate that you use or something like that or per square foot?
No, you know, my guess is that if you have folks that are living in these buildings, might be younger couples. I'm a little bit older, although downtown Newburgh isn't thriving, you know, it's not like downtown Portland. But we did not have any sort of tool that would allow us to provide some sort of logical estimate or of how many students would be living and down in these buildings. Of course, they are welcome and there would not be any sort of anything that would prohibit them from being in the downtown. Heck, I think living in the downtown Newburgh area would be be a be a nice, nice thing to do with with families. You can go and check out the pet store and all sorts of stuff. But yeah, we don't have any specific amounts. I suppose we could take a look at the households, number of households and come up with an idea there, but it would be an estimate.
Yeah, okay. I also see, I think I'm right about this. It looks to me like it's structured to really encourage the taller buildings. They get a bigger return. And is that really the city's policy to try to get four and five-story buildings maybe in downtown?
Well, you know, we'd love to have some really tall buildings. You know, you'd have one, it would be a shocker to have anything above three stories at this point. Even the three-story building over on Second Street and Edwards provided for some comments. I just, I don't see having a four and five-story building in the downtown. And the other thing is, this isn't a sort of program that is going to absolutely make somebody want to build a building. There's going to have to be some additional help as well. These buildings aren't cheap to construct, but this is just a little bit of help to the developer.
Thank you.
Keith, I had a question regard. Well, I've got a few questions, but the one kind of regarding around buildings, you use the Union Block as an example and said that that would be from land. So does this include tearing down existing buildings or does it include remodeling and rehabilitating existing historic buildings?
Yeah, so the way this program operates, there's kind of a two-sided abatement. If you have affordable housing, then you can get the abatement on the land. If it's if it's just market rate housing, then you're only going to get that on the building. Could you? I'm sorry, I lost my train of thought. Could you? Could you rephrase that one more time?
Yeah, and it might actually lead to my second question around affordability as well. The Union Block example, would that mean having to take buildings down and replacing with the new buildings or would it could it include rehabilitation of current buildings?
No rehabilitation. Yeah, I don't think that anybody would take down. It'd be too cost prohibitive. No, you could rehab a building. That building is currently commercial and residential. It'd be more like a building that say has a vacant second story, maybe some commercial uses on the first floor. That that sort of program or that sort of building could be redeveloped. Somebody could add a second story to an existing first-story commercial building. That gets a little bit tricky with the building codes and and the ability to support that extra load. But the program is not set up to incentivize demolition of existing buildings.
Okay. And would the affordable housing aspect of it, would that still be applicable if they were to not do the land? Like if they were to rehab a current building, would that still meet the necessary requirements to have those affordable housing standards in there?
Yeah, well, in order to get that affordable taxing break, they have to be, I think it's like eighty or eighty-five percent at the median income. They it's the way we define within our housing program, what is affordable. They have to meet that definition and then they have to guarantee that it's going to stay affordable. So there's an annual review of these buildings to make sure that they're still complying. But at this point, you know, we were not able to identify any affordable housing that came of the the vertical came from the vertical housing development zones.
I have a question. How would, how does that like parking? You know, if we're we're going up, which is, I like that idea. I mean, then we have to have parking on a ground. So how does, how did have you guys looked at that?
Yeah, so within the central business district, commercial uses or office, they're not required to have any parking. There's no parking standards for them. Residential, they do have to provide parking. We have a couple of different programs. One, they could they could look at, you know, potential parking structure, underground parking structures. Those things get really expensive, too. You have to have airflow and there's a lot of different things that go into them. But they would still have to provide parking. We have some options where if you can find parking within 400 feet that is not utilized, say during certain times of the day or there's an abundance, then they can enter in with a legal agreement that would be reviewed by our legal department to make sure that that would hold. So yeah, they would have to provide parking. But there's some options there. And we also have what we call a fee-in-loo program, too. So this fee-in-loo program allows a developer to pay a certain amount into into kind of a savings account that can only be spent for parking purposes. And this is a new program. We just put it in place. So no one's taken advantage of that yet, but we do have a couple of options. But yeah, they would still have to provide parking.
Okay, thank you.
Keith and Patrick, this question might not be for you, but I think it's something important to think about because it does impact the education side of residency in Newburgh. You know, anyone with children understands that we're in an absolutely drought situation when it comes to childcare and pre-K for our children in Newburgh. If we're looking to attract, you know, economic development and have commercial and heightened commercial activity here and potentially young families, what is there anything in place to address that specifically?
Attract young families?
No, the drought of childcare and pre-K services. If we're trying to attract more economic development, more young residents to the area, and we already don't have enough in that area to support our current needs.
I'm not aware that the city has a program to do that sort of thing. In fact, I have kids, but they're older, so I'm not even aware of it. So there's deficiency in childcare then around the town, eh?
Yes, and especially pre-K. Yeah.
Pre-K. See, I did not know that. I'm not aware. Probably good, good place to start is to, you know, send a letter or or show up at one of our, one of the online council meetings and let them know. I this is the first I've heard about the shortage of the the pre-K care.
Thank you. Are there any other questions for Patrick or Keith?
I have one. You have, you've talked to a bunch of other taxing districts. Have there been any that have expressed specific reservations that you're going to have to deal with?
Not, not that I'm aware of. In fact, they have a whole group that meet, I think they meet quarterly to go over the programs, what's working for them, what isn't working for them. But I haven't heard any complaints at this point.
I don't mean about other people doing it. I meant the other taxing entities you've been talking to for this.
Oh, okay, gotcha. Um, yeah, so we've talked to just about everybody but Yamhill County Soil and Water and Portland Community College. We've, we seem to get support from Yamhill County. We didn't hear from the extension services, but they were they were watching our presentation there. We did present to the Shea Hillam Park and Rec District. That was probably more of a 50/50 call. Will Lamont ESD, we made a presentation to them. They, they probably seemed about 50/50, maybe a little more in 50/50. They were kind of, they actually asked if we had presented to the Newburgh School District yet. So we let them know that we had not yet, but we I think at that point, we did have it have it set up. So we're seeing that, you know, I think the majority of taxing jurisdictions are leaning towards support. I'd hate to make a call and say, yes, they're going to support it, not really knowing.
You say the ones that were 50/50. Do you get a sense of what the reluctance was or the hesitation? Why they were hesitant?
Well, I think with the C, I, you know, it was CPRD. I think there. I hate to say anything about that. I don't know.
Well, I mean, what I'm saying is, I don't want you to try to read other people's minds, but if they said something, they said, boy, that's a problem. This here's a problem. Did they point to anything like that?
No, no, I didn't hear anybody complaining about it being a problem or saying it was a problem. It is. It's a temporary program. It's not forever. And, you know, hopefully we're going to get some buildings that may never have been built. You know, this is just a small incentive. But no, they didn't. No one really pointed out specific issues.
I yeah, Madam Chair, if I may just add just a bit, I think the few reservations that we heard was more based on the overall efficacy of the program. As you can see, there's, there's not a lot that this program is going to do on its own and we need to have other programs like urban renewal and also the helping with the actual cost of construction related to permit fees. Those are, those are an important factor as well. Oh, and of course, our educational service district is just waiting to follow your lead. So I was, from what we've heard from the, the educational district is that if you all was supported, they would. So not to put you all on the spot, but that was just a summary is that we all realize that it's not going to be. This is not the only thing that's going to help incentivize this. It's just one tool in the toolbox, but without it, it would be less likely to succeed, to have something like this be incentivized.
Right. And if if it doesn't succeed, then there's no taxes being abated and I guess we're not hurt. Is that right?
Yeah, and on the flip flip side, we may not get buildings built. You know, that the whole idea is hopefully we're going to have a long term benefit from a program like this, where yes, there is some taxes given up for ten years. But then after that, the full full taxing benefit does come into the jurisdictions.
What what would a property need to do to qualify for the tax abatement under this program?
Well, they're going to have to have first floor commercial, it has to remain commercial. And then the floors above that commercial, the commercial development have to be residential and it has to remain residential. So those are pretty much the requirements. There's an annual review to make sure that, say, the commercial space is still remaining commercial space. And the same thing with the residential.
Okay.
I have a question.
Go ahead, Dave.
Hey, just real quick, what it the city council from from Newburgh, so you think for sure they're gonna go for this and who's going to benefit the most?
Well, I I wouldn't be making this presentation if they didn't initiate the work. So the council passed a resolution to have us begin work on this program. They supported the downtown improvement plan, and that's where this is all coming from. It's it's built on making our downtown even better than what it is and keep keeping what we have and and getting more.
There's no pressure from the wine industry or, you know, any type of particular special interest group pushing this?
I know, I I haven't heard of one. The 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 downtown improvement plan was drafted, I believe, in two thousand and sixteen. So it's been around. We have a guy in our office named Doug Rux, who is a stickler about making sure that these these plans don't set on shelves and collect dust. So that's what we're doing. We're implementing the plans and this is this is one part of it.
Will there be any like Airbnb's allowed in this whole thing or is this strictly not?
No, you would have to have market writ, long term rentals. It wouldn't wouldn't qualify if they were short term rentals, less than thirty days or less for less than thirty days.
Thank you.
So Keith, correct me if I'm wrong on this. Tonight was a presentation for information, and if and when you get to the point, you'll send a formal letter of support request to the board?
Yeah, it it's kind of in for is kind of called an opt in, opt out letter. It's part of the state statutes where we're required to send out that letter. And then we we request that you provide a thumbs up or thumbs down as a board.
Okay. Is there any idea when it might the letter might be coming or is it?
Well, we're hoping to get this program in place sometime in the spring twenty twenty one. So I would say February, maybe somewhere in there, maybe March. It it all depends on how the planning commission meetings line up. And we're actually kind of pretty full agendas coming up here, at least through the end of the year.
Is the board comfortable if when we receive that letter in February, if we bring it back up as an agenda item for discussion and sort of consensus at that point? Yes. Yeah, okay, okay, great. Well, there's another question. Thank you, Patrick and Keith.
Okay, and and just to kind of on the informal thing, it sounds like this is maybe a good thing in eyes of of some of you, some of you folks. And we we hope that you take a chance, take a look at all that information. You know, we're really here to try to make the downtown better, sustain what we have, maintain what we have, and see if we can get some more development. Thank you and do appreciate you allowing us to make the presentation and, you know, have have a great evening.
Of course, thank you.
Okay, bye bye.
All right. Next on our agenda, we have Dr. Morlock with our reopening update.
All right, and this will be a short update. Do want to let you know that we are still working on plans for at least the limited in person instruction, which we've spoken about before. Again, it's not our hybrid system that is actually bringing in students who are at most risk for getting through school as well as some career and technical education. So we're working on all of those plans currently. For those of you who may not have tracked it, we did go from three weeks ago. The metrics changed and they're looking at two week look backs. So we went from one seventy to two hundred and eighty eight, and then the last two weeks we've been at three hundred and sixty eight. So we have been climbing along with the rest of the state. I do want to clarify that the test positivity rates have changed to measure actual positive tests and not people. So in the past, they were testing if you tested a person, say, four times. And of those four tests, one of them was positive, it was counting as a hundred percent. And so they've revised our percentage rates of the test positivity. Now that would actually just count as twenty five percent, meaning that the the actual test was positive, the other three were negative. So even with that, so last week, our test positivity rate would have been twelve percent. So that's been revised to six. This week we are at six point six, so we are still increasing in test positivity rate, even though they've revised those numbers. So again, they they revised last week to twelve, from twelve percent down to six, the prior week from eight point four down to four point two. But the numbers are still climbing with those changes. So we don't have a definite date at this time for us to begin that process. We are meeting with our associations regularly. We're meeting with our administrators regularly, still working on plans, transportation, food service, health and safety. But at this time, we don't, we don't have a set date because we are continuing to climb. It is recommended that if you're in limited in person, pass the two hundred mark that you would consider going back to C D L. It's a little bit squishy about being able to start that. But we feel at this time with this continuing, we'll continue to plan and be ready. But our numbers continue to grow fairly significantly. So this time we don't have, again, as I said before, we don't have a set date. We've continued to plan and be ready for when those things come back. We'd like to try to get some students in the building to provide some initial support from our most struggling learners. But at this point, we're still on hold for all of that. And that's really all I have for you. It's I know many people are watching those numbers and just wanted to be clear about where we were.
Are there any questions for Joe regarding the in person learning? Thanks for keeping us updated.
You're welcome, thank you.
Yeah. Okay, next up, we have Nikki with our monthly financials.
Just looking at the report that I submitted, talking about the ending fund balance, there was a question about what percentage of our budget that is. Taking out the beginning fund balance, it talks about, it's about six point five three percent. Leaving that in there, it's about fifteen point two nine. And looking at those numbers, you have to keep in mind that we have some extra costs going to be applied to that throughout the year that are still in flux as well as extra transportation costs. And we don't know where that's going to land with the in person or limited in person. That could impact those numbers quite a bit. And also in report, we did get an updated S S F estimate for nineteen twenty. It looks like because of the nineteen twenty numbers that our floor for twenty twenty one would be at the five point six or five thousand six hundred number, which is pretty close to where we've been budgeting and what we're tracking throughout the years. So that has not moved very much. And they did say that they would adjust our other figures in January. So we'll have a better idea what it's looking like in the future. For our budget process, so that will be helpful. And as you follow the report, my notes down, and this is an estimate, it's not meant to scare anybody. It's just meant to make people very aware as far as our A D M W, so our weighted A D M being reduced by about four hundred, which is very significant when you multiply that times our factor of eight thousand seven hundred and forty eight. But the eight thousand seven hundred constantly changes based on the state numbers. So this is what we know right now. It can change a ton by the time we have our adjustments. It's just something that we need to be aware of and keep watching as we're hiring as we have opportunities to make adjustments and to save some money between this year and next year. Because there's always something we can spend a few more dollars on, you know, but we need to plan ahead and also prepare for what we know is coming down the line. So we're very aware of that in everything we do. Let's see, and our auditors were there the first week in November, so we're working on. So they came on site, one of them came on site. Just view and review anything that's hard copy, that it's hard to scan and send. And we're still sending over little pieces here and there. So we should be on time and we should have our audit done by the end of December and have it submitted to O D E on time. They're very, they've become very fluent in doing this remotely, so I don't see any issues with any of that. Let's see, are there any questions on the numbers? I updated the monthly. It looks pretty much, you know, we're really on track for what we know. We have some adjustments between the general fund and some grant money that came in that we need to move some things over. And that will give us some more room in the general fund to but that is just in cleaning up some account numbers and moving some things over. So that will be helpful as far as monitor, as far as increasing our ending fund balance going into next year. So that will be very helpful. Are there any questions at this point?
Yeah, I have one. The chart you were talking about on page thirty one, the bottom one, the colored one, colorful one, and the data just above it about our four hundred and five projected decline in A D M W. I can't figure out right off the top of my head what that percentage is. But do you have any way of estimating statewide what the percentage reduction reductions would be? I'm guessing that there are going to be statewide reductions. And we're only going to be in trouble if ours is bigger than others, is bigger than average. So wondering if you know how close we are to average or whether we're above or below with that with that particular.
I don't go on the state average, and that's kind of the the hard part is, you know, our numbers have gone down, I suspect. And but I, you know, in the meetings with other school districts, I know our kindergarten numbers are the same as many school districts. So I think everybody has gone down in similar ways or a lot of them have. So it's really a shot in the dark as to where this year will reconcile statewide. Because every district is going to have that reduction in enrollment, and then that will impact eight thousand seven hundred per student. If statewide, if our numbers are lower, that number is just going to go up, so we might not be impacted as much. But that just depends on every other school district in the state, so it's.
Do we do we generate this estimate with the four hundred and five decline ourselves? Or is that something that we do interacting with the state?
And that is based on, I'm looking at that based on what our nineteen twenty final is as far as I know it. So that would be our base compared to what our current warm body count is.
Right, we're doing that in-house.
Yeah, so the in-house, and actually, the last number that I just did was, we have data collections that go to the state like quarterly. So that was one of our official data collections that went to O D E, which is different than we watch our monthly numbers, just to see how it's changing month to month. That was an official report that went to O D E.
Do you compile those official reports to state totals so that they can keep track of how the state's doing? Somebody should be keeping track of how the state's doing overall, right?
Well, well, yeah, the state brings all that together. So then when they update our monthly payments, which will be in January, then roll all the estimates from every school district in and recalculate everybody's. So our monthly payment at that point can be adjusted based on those monthly, based on the overall state A D M W numbers.
But January is when they share it. They don't share it any other time. You can't ask them now how it's shaping up.
No. Yeah, so so they, because there's so many numbers and then like, you know, say, the smaller districts that I've worked at are dropping the bucket. You know, if Portland and Salem and a couple of these get it wrong, they're not a drop in the bucket. All the rest of us move a ton. So so that's the problem. So some of the variables are very different.
So what you're telling me is the first chance we'll have to get a glimpse, maybe, of how we're doing related to the state is in January when you get back from them.
That's the next real official estimate that will come out.
I'm not to bug you about this again next month.
I'll I'll tell you what I know next month, and I might say, you know what, just listen to the recording in November, and and that's what you get now.
All right, that'd be fair.
But no, I'll I'll tell you what I know, and we'll get bits and pieces and we get information from folks, folks that have their their hand on the pulse kind of thing. So we can get some really good insight, but it might not be official. So.
Okay, that's very good. It helps me a lot. We appreciate that.
And I'll say this out loud, just to make sure I'm clear in my own head, the the four hundred and five, that represents a decrease in enrollment. Is that correct? Yeah, and you know.
That's weighted enrollment. And so, yeah, so based on our real body count, and then you apply the sped number of eleven percent. So that's going to reduce every time our numbers go down. And then we guess on the success cap number, which won't, we won't know until a year following after that. So those are, yeah.
So some of that is external factors, you know, the state funding formula, and some of that is internal factors, how many students are here? And we've kind of known since March that we were going to lose numbers as folks look for other options while everybody makes adjustments for for COVID. So, yeah, it's it's going to be a big change. But, you know, I just am amazed and just so proud of the work that everybody has done. When I look at that estimated ending fund balance of about nine million dollars, that represents so much work on the part of all of our teachers, our staff, you know, janitors of the administrators in managing their finances, making budgets that are the most effective use of of our school money. It just represents an amazing amount of work that's happened over the past couple of years and has put us in a position where, yeah, you know, if it turns out that four hundred and some decrease actually pans out that way, that's going to be a major budgetary issue, but we've got something to work with that we haven't had in the past for quite some time. So I just want to thank everybody at every level of the district and every facet of the district for helping get us to that position.
All right, any other questions for Nikki? I want to say, thanks, okay, Nikki.
I was just going to say, it has been a group effort across the board. I mean, with with that and everybody becoming very aware of how every piece kind of fits into that puzzle when it comes to staffing and everything. So definitely been a joint project in educating everybody, being willing to work towards that goal, so.
Yeah, and thank you to you specifically, Nikki. I mean, I think, you know, budgeting and revenue streams in the state of Oregon and education world are always a moving target, but especially with COVID. And I think we've rightly so, put a lot of attention towards, you know, student access and equity in sort of an academic and and social support sense. But I think you have not gotten enough attention for what you've been doing also to support our students and ensure our district remains in a very fiscally stable position. So, thank you. Okay, well, we're a little bit ahead of schedule, but let's go ahead and take a five minute break. Let's take a seven minute break and meet back here at eight fifteen. Okay. All right, it's eight fifteen, welcome back. We're going to start off second half with a student achievement report from Dr. Brown.
Thank you, Brandy. Okay. Okay, thanks very much, everybody. Can you all hear me? Okay, my name is Derek Brown. I'm the Director of Teaching and Learning here at the Newburgh School District. And I appreciate the time tonight to give you an update on how things are going in our district relative to achievement. I want to say upfront that I would, I'm going to frame the conversation in more of the context of teaching and learning update. Achievement, the word infers that we would be bringing more of a kind of summative kinds of. Results to you to talk about, you know, how things are going in terms of, you know, our state assessments and things like that. As you all know, last spring, the state decided to cancel state assessments. So typically this conversation, you know, we'd be looking at that information, looking at our trend lines over the last few years. And talking about how that informs our thinking moving forward and what areas we want to focus attention and try to improve. We don't have those results, so we're going to be trying to frame a conversation around teaching and learning using other data that we do have available to us. But, but we have a pretty big hole now that we don't have state assessment results from, from last spring. And this coming spring's testing window is in question, and I'll talk a little bit about that maybe toward the end of the conversation. So with that in mind, I want to show you a little bit of information about attendance. Which of course we have defined differently in comprehensive distance learning based on guidance from the state. Um, I'm going to talk to you a little bit about some of the data that we have from our fall administration of a diagnostic, a literacy diagnostic tool that we use called DIBELS. And the, and then for our dual language students, we use an assessment tool name. Derek, we just lost your audio. Oh.
There you go. Now we can hear you.
Back now, okay. I've got a little bit of a shaky internet connection, I think, so I'll just, just keep pausing me if I cut out and I'll pause till it's back. Thanks for that. Okay. So as a reminder, when we're talking about attendance, the way that we're measuring attendance is if students are actively engaged in either a synchronous learning session. Or, or if they're engaged in some other way, meaning if they are engaged in an asynchronous kind of learning. Learning mode and corresponding with their teacher somehow. So that could be email, it could be any number of things. If we have any kind of interaction of that nature, not just live synchronous learning, then that is counted as attendance. And we're required to take attendance once every twenty-four hour period in the comprehensive distance learning model. So the percentages you see there is the percentage of attendance that we are having right now at each of our three levels, elementary, middle and, and high school. So that would be all students in each of those three levels. And I do, and I do want to point out that. The disaggregated data, so if I, if we were looking at this information by demographic, there are some important differences that I didn't put on the slide for you, but I do want to mention them. So for our students who are talking about race ethnicity that are white, Asian or multiracial. And again, these are self-identified demographic characteristics. Those students are all eighty-six percent or above. And students that we, that are defined and categorized by the state as underserved, which would be all of the other race ethnicity groups together are at about eighty percent. So there are some differences in terms of demographic background here. And the same is true of some of the program enrollments like special education, English learners and economically disadvantaged. Those groups are in the high seventies, seventy-six to seventy-eight percent compared to others that are in that mid and upper eighty percent range. So.
Are those figures district wide then?
Yes, yes.
Is there any difference in the pattern and the gap between the levels? Or are they all, are, are they about the same patterns all the way across?
Yeah, they're pretty similar all the way across, but there is definitely a gap there. And I'd be happy to, to put that in another document and send that to you if you'd like to see that broken out.
I might, the, I also wonder in terms of attendance, I know the attendance that, the way we define attendance now is not the way we were defining it a year ago.
Right.
So it's going to be hard to compare.
Yeah.
Do you have any way, way of knowing whether these numbers are higher or lower than those numbers, even though they're not comparable?
You know, during the spring, when we were going through our distance learning chapter, we had, we had pretty good, pretty good. That's, that's not the right way to say. We had a lot of kids engaged, we had fairly high percentages of students engaged in, in distance learning. Up until about two or three weeks before school let out. And then we noticed that there was a, a, a drop, a pretty significant drop across all three levels. So I think it was difficult for us to keep all districts to, to keep kids engaged in that particular style of learning. That looked very different, as you said, than, than CDL looks right now.
So right now, if, if we have one interaction with them, is that counted as attendance for that day?
It does, yes.
Is there any way of monitoring or knowing how much of the rest of the time a student is connected? I mean, you could do one interaction in five minutes and would they be gone the rest of the time and we'd still count them as attended, attended?
Yes, so currently, that's how we're counting it. We do have some new reports that are going to be available to us here in the next couple of weeks. If I was giving this report to you in January, I think I'd be able to break down our CDL attendance in much more specific ways. So I look forward to, to pulling some of that information. Our teachers and our administrators in buildings are coding CDL in more specific ways than just was a student, did a student send an email? Or did we have a phone call or did they log into the live learning session? So we have that information, but we haven't been able to pull it out of our student information system yet in a way that we can present it to you. To, to kind of see the nuances of what attendance looks like in CDL. But very soon, we're going to be able to do that. So right now I just have a bit more of a broad stroke data set to, to give you.
Okay, I may be answering something you, you were about to tell us, I don't know, I don't think I saw it on the report, but. So it's hard for us to know, for me as a board member, it's hard to know how much quality time we're getting with our students. And how that compares with any other people's, any other district's experience. Even harder for us to know how it compares to last spring, like you mentioned. And I think we're in a different mode a little bit, so it may not be directly comparable. But I just, if people ask me, you know, how are students doing? Are we getting a lot of engagement? I don't have any way of telling them anything. I don't even know how we compared other districts. So, uh. I don't know if, is there any way we can get such an idea? Are we doing better or worse? Particularly if we're using really, really rough statistic and one contact counts as an attendance and we're counting it the same as somebody who's there seven hours. So, uh, just, just how do we know?
Yeah, it, it's a big challenge for us right now. And I think there, it's definitely not comparable to last spring because the, the kind of learning that we were facilitating last spring looks very different than what our current model looks like. Uh, but also we're defining attendance or engagement very differently there. The more important question you're asking is how do we know? And I'm hope, I hope that I can show you some information that gives us at least a bit of a temperature check on how that's going. But, but we do have some limitations right now in terms of understanding how that's going. So this slide shows you, I, I wanted to, to try to. Find a way of giving some context to our Newburgh information at our elementary schools. Based on DIBELS data. DIBELS is the quarterly diagnostic reading assessment that we give. It's part of our response to intervention work, RTI, that you've heard about in some previous presentations. And so this one is showing you national DIBELS data. And the two bars that you see for each grade represent the percent behind. So that means the percentage of students who are in need of intense intervention based on that assessment. So that means students that are significant, students that take the test at the beginning of the year and are significantly behind, meaning they're going to need lots of intense intervention. So this is not, I guess our Newburgh kids would be a part of this, but this is really part of the bigger national sample. And you can see using kindergarten as the, as the one that I'll talk through. Last fall, kindergartners that took the assessment, about forty-three, forty-four percent of them. Scored in a manner that indicated that they would need intense intervention. This fall, fifty percent, so that's an increase of six or seven percent. And you can kind of follow that, that pattern all the way across to see. This is one proxy for trying to understand what was the impact of our school closure last year and any loss that may have happened over the course of the summer. For Newburgh, so we have this information for Newburgh as well. And for our kindergartners. In nineteen twenty, it was forty-seven percent needed intense intervention and, and then this fall fifty-five. So that was an eight percentage point increase. So you could say that for our, for our Newburgh's kindergarten students, we were a little worse than the, the national trend in that area. And for our first grade students, we went from thirty percent that needed intense intervention a year ago to forty percent. So that's a, that's a ten percent increase. Now that's, that sounds like a significant increase, but if you look at this slide, you see that from a national standpoint, first graders went from twenty-six, I think twenty-seven percent up to forty. So the national level, more of a significant impact for first graders. And in Newburgh, we had about a ten percent increase. So we're consistent with national this fall, but didn't see as much of a drop off. And our other, so second through fifth grade, we actually were better than the national average in second and fourth grade. Our percentages went, went down. And in third and fifth grade, it was one to three percent increase. So, so really I would say across the board, using this as one frame, we were in better shape than the impact that, that was felt at the national.
Sorry, you, we lost your audio again. No.
Back now?
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, sorry about that. So I was just summing up to say that I think in Newburgh, our experience was that we were a little bit, we had a not as significant a negative impact across the board. Kinder in first grade were where we saw, you know, some, some impact from this. As did the rest of the country or the, the rest of the folks that took the, this assessment.
Derek, a quick question on that one.
Yeah.
The students who are in the blue bar for second grade last year would have been in the yellow bar, right?
Correct, that's correct.
Well, compared to how the individual classes are doing, you have to compare the yellow bar. To the blue bar for the next grade.
That's true. And I don't know at the, I don't know at national level or at the Newburgh level, you know, how many kids moved in and out of districts that maybe didn't, you know, had it or didn't have it. But yes, you would want, you could look longitudinally that way.
Thank you.
I have a question, I have a question, just, so the kindergartners in the blue bar are people who, kindergartners are just showing up to school.
Correct.
And they are also showing depth that, that doesn't probably have much to do with schooling.
Correct.
I mean, something's going, maybe preschools that weren't available or daycare was different, but they.
Right.
There's a, at least a hypothesis there.
Yeah.
That the COVID thing affected them in their, as they were in their last few months before they went to school. And they had, they suffered as much as anybody but first graders.
That's right.
That's interesting.
Yeah, yeah, I think, you know, and when we talk about kindergartners, you know, those are kids that are learning how to read. So we know walking in the door that you know, they're going to need the most help. As you said, Ron, the the kindergartners in the blue bar there, if they were in a pre K program last spring, that very likely was canceled for them and they didn't have that opportunity. So they would have been receiving some kind of support probably from the grownups at the house. They would have got probably very limited opportunities over the summer. So, yeah. Difficult situation for everybody.
I was just gonna ask one quick question, Derek. Would you prefer to have questions wait till the end or would, is this okay to do them slide by slide?
Yeah, this is fine. While while it's fresh in people's mind is great.
Okay, perfect. Go ahead, Brian.
How's this assessment being administered right now? And will that potentially have some impact on what we're seeing?
Yeah, that's a really great question. So a-actually, let me move to the next slide while I answer that because the next slide will be, the next couple of slides will just be our Newburgh information. For our kindergartner, kinder and first grade students, we did have these students come in to to the schools. So we set up protocols where they could come in one at a time and work with an adult to go through the assessment. And then go through all of our, you know, cleaning protocols and things like that. So it took a little bit of time for us to do that. We talked about the possibility of trying to administer remotely and our teachers and our E L A TOSA and other folks administrators felt like it just was going to be too difficult to be able to administer remotely and put too much pressure on parents. So we came up with a system to do that safely within our schools. And so that's how we did that one for grades two through five. Those students did take the test remotely at home and that absolutely could create some noise in the data that we would need to be mindful of for sure. This particular slide, what this one is showing you is percentages of students and where they scored on that assessment in terms of being at or above grade level standards. Or a little bit below the grade level standard, or perhaps significantly below the standard. So in the previous slide, when I talked about the percentage of students needing intense intervention, that would be connected to the red bar that you see. Excuse me, on the next couple of slides. So this is just your your Newburgh data here. So you can see for kindergartners, you've got about thirty one percent or so that were scoring at or above. And then for first graders, we've got more like about fifty one, fifty two percent that are scoring at or above. And to put that into context, actually, maybe before I do that, let me, let me go to the next slide, which shows the same information for grades two through five. So again, the two through five students did take this assessment remotely from home. I also want to say, as part of an answer to Brian's question, you know, I would typically tell you that if we don't have ninety five percent or better of our population taking the assessment, then that means we really don't have the representative sample and we want to be pretty careful with the data in in those cases. For these assessments, we were, you know, anywhere from ninety to somewhere north of ninety five. There might be a grade level or two that were in the high eighties. So we definitely have a lot of kids participating in the assessment. We don't, we don't consistently have ninety five percent plus taking the assessment. So that's just something to to be aware of. Here you can see again, you can, if you were to combine the yellow and green bars, you can get the percentage of students at that grade level that were at or above grade level standard. And you can, you can see that. I wanted to give you a little context on that. Because again, the question that I think we're all trying to get at is what has been the impact of last spring? Plus any, you know, sort of typical learning loss that we might experience over the summer and then being in the the CDL model this year. We all want to know how much of an impact that's making to all of our kids. So I took a look at these numbers for grades two through five and compared it to last year. So at the second grade level, again, on this slide, you see we've got about forty five, forty six percent were that are at or above and am I reading that right? Pardon me, last year we had about forty seven percent that were at or above. And then this year, it looks like it's about forty five there. So a a little bit of an impact, about two percent less. And those numbers are pretty consistent across the grades, looking at last year's numbers. In the fourth grade last year, we had fifty three percent at or above, and this year we actually had fifty seven.
We lost your audio again. Oh, Derek, we lost your audio again.
Last thing we heard was we had fifty seven.
No, now he's just going, nope.
So that's.
We, we, oh, are you back?
Yeah.
Okay, we we heard the fourth grade.
Yeah.
Numbers and then it dropped down.
Right. So I did, yeah, I was just making the point that I I don't see in in these numbers, I don't see a whole lot of impact. I see fairly negligible, you know, two to three percent differences, looking at comparing this to last fall. And then at fourth grade, last year we had fifty three percent in the fall that were at or above and this year fifty seven. So fourth graders this fall actually did a little bit better than fourth graders last fall. Even though last spring, those kids had their third grade year cut short and started this year in CDL. So I I don't, I don't see a ton of impact there, looking at least at last year's data.
Derek?
Yeah.
Do we have a breakdown in demographics on on? If if a certain group of students aren't, aren't performing?
I do have demographic information that I can provide to you if you'd like to see all of that broken down by race ethnicity and program. I can certainly get that to you.
Thank you.
Yes. This slide is the Adele data, which is the corresponding assessment to DIBELS that we use for our students in the dual language program. So it's measuring Spanish literacy in a very similar way. It's actually using a slightly different version of the test, which is why this just reports out the three different proficiency levels rather than the four that you see in the other slides, but it's it's really the the Spanish version of the same assessment. And so you can see here across kinders through third grade, what we look like this fall. And I would say green would be at or above, not just above. And this is going to be certainly a smaller number of students as well.
Derek, is this for kids in the dual language program or is it for our English language learners or both?
It's students in the dual language program.
Thank you.
Yeah.
This is their master's Spanish.
Correct.
And how do these patterns compare to previous years? I start before, maybe it's just my memory, but.
Yeah, there there are definitely some similarities here to previous years. However, I, you know, I think it would be a good idea for us to come and talk to you at some point in the future about the dual language program in general. Last year, we had some, the dual language teachers and some other folks come together, take a look at our dual language plan and take a look at the percentages of English and Spanish and the what languages they're teaching in in the core content areas and those change a bit over time. So that as students are getting into late elementary and in the middle, we're really trying to get students, you know, fully fluent in both languages by the time they are at the end of their middle school career. So there were some adjustments made that are being implemented now, and I think that probably will have some bearing on what numbers, what our numbers are going to look like.
So the reason for my question is that if this were patterned every time, it would mean that every year after first grade, they have hardly anybody who's speaking well in Spanish and it's a struggle to get them back up. And this would chart the work they're trying to get them by third grade.
Right.
But if it's just the different cohorts are different. And so that would mean if that's the case, then this first grade cohort's got a problem. But this kindergarten cohort might be in good shape. I would assume the more kids you have that can speak Spanish, the more you'll be able to do the instruction in Spanish and the more you're move everybody along. This is one of those cases where the people are behind or slowing the whole class.
Right.
And so if we're constantly having a problem where we have to drop off at one particular age, that would be something that somebody would need to look at. Or if it's just cohorts and what happened to that cohort, whatever.
Right. Yeah, I think that's exactly right. And that is what fueled the conversation last year as our team was coming together to take in our dual language plan, which had been originally built way six, seven years ago or so as we were as Newburgh was implementing that program and we were modeling the program off of what we saw really great dual language programs in some other states. We also looked really closely at Hillsborough and probably some other Oregon districts that had been doing it for a while. But we had to start taking a look at those percentages and deciding whether or not they needed to be adjusted. So again, I can bring more Adele data to you if you want to see a little bit more of the pattern over time. I think it would be great to actually come to you and just have a dual language program conversation and bring a larger dual program data set to you so that you can have a better understanding of what's going on there.
I'd certainly be interested in that. I think the board has decided whether we're going to spend time on it, but I think it's, I would be interested in it. I'd be interested. Because if you had the first grade problem all the way along, you don't have a critical mass to do a lot of instruction in Spanish and you're going to have trouble making it around. I mean, you're only talking to two or maybe, maybe, are those percentages? Yeah, well.
No, those are numbers of students. Those are numbers of students, yeah.
And there's more than one section, I assume. Looks like there's at least two sections.
Yeah.
And so you only have one per stu-, one per section that's ready to actually do instructions in Spanish well.
Yeah.
There's not enough, that'd be difficult. So, yeah, we are, I think, I don't know, you and Joe could decide what you want to do about that and give us a recommendation, but I think if it's, if that's the experience people are having, that's going to be a disappointment. We ought to be able to figure it out.
I I will talk to Joe and Greg and see if we can find a time, maybe this spring to come back and give you a deeper dive on how things are going with the dual language program. And that was a really good time to do that. The program, as you know, has now shifted. We have kids that started in the program kindergarten and they're now in the middle school. So we've been working with making that transition happen successfully and very soon those students will be moving into the high school. So we'll see if we can get something on your, on your agenda, maybe this spring for that.
Go ahead, my Brian, go ahead.
Oh, I just want to say, I'd like to see how the each cohort in terms of class progresses over time. Because, you know, this particular data set doesn't have a lot of context. I don't know if
Yeah.
or in third grade were actually doing a lot worse when they were in the first grade or they were doing better. It would be nice to be able to see the.
I'd like to see attention on this because this is the kind of program that I think could be a draw for our district and I'm and a reputation enhancer as well of being good for the kids.
Yes.
Yeah. We gotta make sure.
I can certainly pull together a little bit more of a longitudinal look so that you have more context there. And there are some other things we can pull together to talk about. Measuring the positive impact of this program by looking at outcomes for students in other areas as well. So we will pull that together for you and come back and have that conversation. For our secondary schools, wanted to talk a little bit about grades. Again, with the lack of state, pardon me, state assessments and and just tools in general, grades become an important, again, proxy for us to get a sense for how things are going and keep in mind also that at the secondary schools, we shifted to quarters. So the first quarter just ended last week for the secondary schools. They're entering the second quarter right now. And there, it's really built around a four period day for students. So what you're looking at here, this would be both of our middle schools combined into one. And this is showing you students in the no risk category. So that's seventy three percent of the students at both of the middle schools are currently not receiving any Fs. The low risk category thirteen percent means we have thirteen percent of students who are currently have one F. Some, the some risk category, the yellow one, five percent of students have two Fs. And then the high risk category or nine percent of students have three Fs.
Again, this is the data that would be useful to have, you know, past, past years to compare to.
Right.
And is there any market difference between middle schools on this?
Uh, no, there wasn't. Again, this is a, this is a tough one to compare to previous years because they're on a very different schedule right now. So we can pull, we might be able to pull that data another way to try to create as much of an apples to apples comparison as possible. But that, this will be a bit of a challenging one to create much comparison because the schedules changed and students are only taking four classes per quarter right now.
There's still percentages that we could look at, but you're right. So these are final grades they have, that these kids can't change at semester with other performance?
Uh, no, this I believe would be current up to about the middle of last week. So I don't believe this is representative of the final grade. So there could be some shifting here.
But they've got final grades already. They're getting final grades at each quarter, not at each semester.
Correct, right.
Primesters or four quarters?
Four quarters.
Okay, thank you.
Four quarters, right. And then for the high school, this is measured slightly differently. Uh, this would be D's and Fs. So again, the the color coding is the same here. And I didn't get a chance, I had a little bit of data issues in the, in the dashboard we're currently using, but I wanted to try to disaggregate the middle school slide and this one for you so that you could see if there are certain demographic groups that might be experiencing a more, something more negative here, but just looking at the entire student body. The high school sixty eight percent with no D's or Fs and then fifteen percent with one D or F, eight percent with two, and then again, nine percent of students have three D's or Fs. So probably similar feedback from you, difficult to to kind of fully understand the impact of that right now. And we can, I can try to come up with some ways to give you a little bit more longitudinal context to it. But again, a very different schedule last year will make that a little bit of a challenge.
It will, and I, we have to be careful with that, but I think the more data we have, I'm thinking about this as also with the disaggregated data. It's, it's simple to what the equity committee will work on is going to want to see.
That part will certainly be easier to to pull and get to you more quickly. So I'll work on doing that and getting you that update. Just wanted to say a few things about some of the curriculum work that's going on. I think you're familiar with some of these. Because we've been talking about them. We did start a math curriculum pilot K through twelve in the fall. And that program's called Into Math. So we're still currently running that program. I meet with teachers, I have different groups of teachers for each of these content areas that I meet with monthly to get feedback from them about what is working with the the tool, what is not working, what additional support do they need in terms of either PLC time or training or something along those lines? So we're collecting a lot of feedback right now on all of these things. The math work is really built on the work we did last year with our, with our K twelve staff coming together and digging really deeply into the standards, talking about learning progressions, talking about how we're aligned from one grade to the next, which we call vertical alignment. And just making sure we have really nice, smooth transitions. So, so we've invested a lot of time and energy in the math work right now and are continuing to push it forward. The other content areas that I have on that slide are, those are two.
You dropped audio again.
About now.
There you go.
Thanks for stopping me. I almost made it. So the other Wonders, Twig, Amplify and Study Sync are tools that we purchased to help support students and teachers through CDL, which we have known is is an indefinite period of time, but we are trying to collect as much information we can about the utility of those tools and effectiveness of those tools because they could become part of a bigger conversation about curriculum adoption at some point in, hopefully in the near future. So, so, yeah, we're, we're making sure we have good feedback loops in place to to learn as much as we can about these tools. We're getting fairly positive feedback right now on Twig and Amplify. Those are both science programs. And we're certainly identifying the things that are working well and not working so well relative to the other ones. Probably the most common piece of feedback I hear from teachers right now, regardless of what instructional tool we're using is it's difficult for them to truly understand how effective the tool will be in a CDL space. So I I think, you know, teachers more than anybody want to get back to school to see students and and certainly that'll be important for them to be able to give us great feedback about how well these tools are going to work long term for them. So. So that's where we are with curriculum work right now. A lot going on in our schools and I think we're learning a lot about, about what the, what options. Um, about, um, about what the, what options we have and, um. Uh, we'll come back or I'll come back hopefully at some point. I think maybe we landed on February to. Maybe have a deeper conversation about our process. We're, um, taking a look at different, uh, curricular tools. Um, and, uh, testing them and evaluating them and then ultimately coming to you all to talk about long-term adoption. So we can dig into that more deeply, uh, in February. And that is, that's what I have for you tonight for teaching and learning.
Okay, we are about five minutes behind. So if the board's comfortable with it, um, if there's any further questions, um, be sure to reach out to Derek. Okay, nobody has any, it's pressing, has to be answered this second. Okay, thank you, Derek. Um, next is actually back to you if you need a second to shift gears.
No.
SIA grant approval. And I know this is, um, actually a bit of a technicality, so I'll let you explain why it's.
Yep, thank you. Yeah. So, uh, during the last meeting, uh, we had put the SIA. Uh, contract agreement on the consent agenda for you to take a look at. Um, and then learn, and then I submitted that information and our minute, our minutes, pardon me, to ODE to show that you had seen it and approved it. And then they gave me feedback that it's actually written into that particular law. That the grant agreement has to be on your regular kind of business part of the agenda, not on the consent agenda. So. So you, you have technically approved it once already, but bringing it back to you to have a, a conversation about it or try to answer any questions you might have. I did wanted to say for, uh, for those of you maybe that didn't have a chance to read it, it's really, um, kind of a boilerplate document. You know, it's got all the standard. Bits around purpose and dispersment, confidentiality, uh, indemnity and, and things like that. It's, um. Kind of boilerplate language, which is why we put it on the consent agenda. Um, but. Happy to answer any questions you might have about it right now and, um, I'll, I'll leave it to you.
I move that the Newburgh School District Board of Directors approve the SIA grant agreement as presented.
I second.
Okay, the motion and a second, is there any discussion? Okay, see none. Everybody, uh, in favor, please raise your hand. And it passes unanimously. Thank you, Derek, for both of those. Okay, next up we have Nikki, um, to talk about our budget calendar.
Okay, it's pretty straightforward. It follows the same, um, process as last year. Um, with a couple kind of pre-trainings in February. Um, and then going into the budget work session and our official budget committee meeting. Um. I think we should start with this plan. I mean, this is just a review, this board meeting, you don't have to, you don't have to vote on it at this point. But in February, I'm sure the information will still be changing, so we'll bring forward what we know at the time. Um, and kind of do that with those both need, with both of those meetings. Um, and then talk about any nuts and bolts as far as, um, the basis of budgeting. We won't have too many new board members, so we can kind of change it up depending on the needs of the group. Um, or bring people in if that would be helpful. Um, but are there any questions with it at this point? Or you can review it and then maybe between now and the next meeting and we can kind of answer those questions between now and then as well. So.
Has the calendar been sent to the, um, budget committee members? That aren't on the board?
Not at this point. It's up for review and then when it gets approved, we will put it out so everybody can get it on their schedules.
I was just planning on sending out this to my representative from my zone and just letting her know this is tentative, but. You know, start to look forward as to what might be coming down the, the calendar pipeline.
Yeah.
I definitely think that's fair to do. It's pretty standard. It shouldn't change much unless we find out that. Um, there's gonna be an official announcement that doesn't quite match up with our dates and we need to move it. Um, but this is what we know at this time, you know, and, and we'll just kind of reserve the right to modify it. Um, if we know there's some important information coming out as we're, because things will be changing quickly. We just don't know what's going on at this point. So.
It's also a great opportunity to reach out to your budget committee, um, zone representative and just double check that they're still interested in service and. If not, then start looking for a replacement.
These people serve like two-year terms, don't they? Or not?
Two or three.
I don't know where my zone one is on her's term. Does, can we get that information or?
It's in a previous packet. We actually discussed this in December. Um, I think everybody is, is. Consistent to continue, so it's just checking in to make sure they're still willing to serve.
Okay. Mine's been on ever since I've been on. It's nine years now, so I don't know if she'll be, I'll ask, sure, we'll check.
So it sounds like you've already got it taken care of, Ron, so you're.
I haven't talked to Beth. I mean, I will.
All right, any questions for Nikki around the budget calendar? Okay, thank you, Nikki. Okay, let's move into our discussion around, um, student fees with Greg.
All right. So just a reminder of our process. Each year the board approves the, uh, student fees and athletic fees at the high school and the middle school level and some specific district. Uh, types of things. And so our process is to, um, ask first the staff what changes they want to make and I do that through the principals. And then they check in with their different, uh, courses or classes to be able to see what is needed. And so just working through. The information that's in the packet and similar to what Nikki said, this is just a discussion tonight with any questions you have and will be approved, uh, next board meeting. At the middle school level, the only changes were, uh, both CV and middle school and Mountain View have changed their kind of. Wheel or elective structure. So those have been eliminated. And Mountain View is keeping a beginning art class and is gonna charge that the same fifteen dollars per semester that's, that CV does. So. Um, we just have the classes removed for that section and then adding Mountain View to the art fee for fifteen dollars. At the high school, there are a couple more significant, uh, not hugely significant, but more changes than at the middle school level. Uh, AP testing again is not in our control. That's through the college board, but that fee's been raised to ninety-five dollars for next year. Uh, the AP chemistry, uh, fee needs to be raised. That hasn't been raised in the last, uh, five years that we have information for. And that's just matching the materials that are needed for that class. And then regular chemistry, the same thing, just needing to have those. Supplies to be able to do what's needed. Choir, they're making a change rather than, uh, making a charge for uniforms every year. They're moving to just, uh, purchasing the first year and then being able to continue those all the way through. So that's a benefit to our students of not having to repay that. Each year, uh, af- year after year. Forensics increases by five dollars and then there's a couple of new course fees. Uh, Makerspace, uh, needs a twenty dollar fee for that. That's the one with kind of creative projects and hands-on learning. Uh, mobile app development is a new one that, um, of course, I think that was approved last year. That's, uh, coding and working through that process and those are the fees needed for there. And then musical theater, uh, is a new course as well with, where they are needing a twenty dollar fee for that. Um, actually, I should have just said for all of those, for the, all the ones on this page here, robotics. And Woods one and two, and the ones I've already mentioned, those are new courses that have been approved that need, um, fees for the materials that are used within them. To be able to work through. And with all of these, the high school does work with students who are not able, not able to pay and. Uh, finds ways to make sure that every student can have access that needs to do it. Uh, finally, the last one is the Willamette Promise, and that is a new program that the high school has entered into that's a really positive one. It's similar to, it's another form of the extended credit option. It's a way for students at the, uh, high school to earn college credit. And this fee is really pretty amazing for thirty dollars. That covers all college credits for the entire school year, regardless of the number of credits that are earned. Uh, and that's one of the reasons why, um, the administration of the high school wanted to add, add Willamette Promise as an option is it's very economical for. The students and gives them access. The fees are not changing at all for the high school, but just as the board has raised every year the question of do we, uh, want to. Remove charging for athletics in order to increase participation. And obviously that might have been increased to our budget as well. The high school administration also had that discussion and so asked that we would mark that in, uh, whatever you want to call that purple or plum or magenta. Um, to see if that would be possible. Some of the discussions we had at the district level are, um. It's really difficult to ascertain exactly how much that would cost because, um, we can figure out what we have. Brought in in previous years, but there's no way to accurately judge how participation would increase with no fees involved. So. We don't know what, what that would do to coaching costs, uniform costs and that sort of thing. So one of the things that we, um, have kicked around is. If as a part of the budgeting process, um, no, say that different way. If the board was interested in removing those fees in the future, that would need to be part of the budgeting process to make sure that we could pay for that. And we might want to look at a phased in approach of, for instance, cutting the fees in half for the first year that we do that, which would then. Give us some better data of gauge of what level increase of participation we see with that, which we could then project forward to be able to budget accurately for that. So, um, that's, that's just the information behind the scenes and you all can have discussions about that. Uh, no changes to any of our copies or faxes or that sort of thing at the district level. So any questions about the changes that are proposed at this point?
Would the sports, uh, be capped for individual sports if we eliminated the fees or would it, we would just take all comers?
I don't, I don't think any of that has been discussed at all at any, at that level of detail because that would definitely be, um. A, a big decision. I'm not even sure who, who and how we make those if that's board, if that's what. So Joe can intervene at that point.
Uh, just a couple of parts that, some of that actually has to do with facility availability, right? So if the, you know, we can only have so many things happening at once. So some sports. Are considered what's called a cut sport and other ones are not. So that really depends upon, uh, it's actually less financial and more just about facility, facility availability and safety around that. So. Uh, it would depend upon that and that would be a discussion, you know, the additional cost of, of coaching and transportation and things. Um, I. The way that the high school has done, um, the work with students in the past is they've taken care of making sure that any kid who wants to. Does participate. So I know there are some students who do not ask and Dave, you probably have some people that you know from the past who just. Um, their pride doesn't allow them to ask for that support. Um, but I do know they work very hard at finding out ways to, uh, take care of these fees and doing that. So I, I don't think we're gonna see. Um, you know, a doubling or, you know, even a, a, a massive increase. But, uh, but again, some of that is based upon. Um, the limitations are often based upon facility space, uh, availability to be able to actually run, um, the practices and things like that. Anyway, I hope that answers the question that, that you were specifically asking.
I had something to add to that too, Joe.
Yeah.
I, I think that, you know, for being there, I think money does come into play for a lot of kids, you know, why they don't play. And I've said this before, Tim Burke does a great job about, you know, getting those kids in there. I think sometimes, you know, the message might be, it still costs money. You know, certain things like cheerleading. Certain things like that, um, not, not trying to pick on them, but it, it can get real expensive. And I guess what I'd like to see is. If we did keep some type of fees, if that would help offset the cost of. Just any, any kid at all that wants to be, say, go out for something expensive like cheerleading, there'd be a way to make that happen. Um, because there really is a real discussion amongst kids that certain things cost a lot of money. Especially when you, like being a tennis coach, you know, tennis rackets can cost quite a bit of money. Uh, baseball bats, softball bats can cost a lot of money. Um, I think that really does come into play for certain kids that. They just kind of see it as a little bit unattainable because they're not gonna go home around the dinner table. And ask for two hundred bucks for a new tennis racket, for example. And then if they do come out, they see the other kids with those. I mean, I know we can't make it perfect across the board, but. I think there's that discussion amongst the kids. I think some kids unfortunately don't go out. And then the other part of that, I know this is a long-winded answer, but the other part of that is, is like the cut sports. It's brutal. I had to do it for twenty years in basketball.
Yeah.
And, uh, my oldest son came out, there was a hundred and forty-three kids dropped for basketball. And we kept four teams and we only have three now in boys' basketball. So that means a hun- over a hundred kids were cut. And when you cut a high school kid, it's just like walking into the district staff for you, Joe, and firing somebody. I know you know that, but it's like you're firing a kid. And I think it's one of the worst things we do in athletics is. Even though I'm competitive at the varsity level and all that, I mean, we've kind of hamstrung ourselves on a lot of the kids that just want to participate. And that's a tough one because we're not parking wreck, but there's a lot of kids that don't have JV two, you know, or those kind of opportunities to play. So I hope that made sense. I know, Joe, you've coached, you understand that.
Yeah, yeah. Actually, no, Dave, I'm, I'm, I'm sorry, I interrupted you.
Oh, go.
Uh, no, I, I actually am in a hundred percent agreement with you. Um, I, I think that that's, I also coached a cut sport and, and. You don't sleep for about three days beforehand. You don't sleep for about three days after, afterwards because it's really, it is a bit like firing somebody. So. You know, one of the, um, I know that we, I want to say it was two years ago, everything BC before coronavirus is hard to remember, but I. It was two or three years ago. We did actually add, we had a request from the high school to add a JV two team because we had so many kids out for. X sport. I don't remember which one it was. Uh, and we did make that, that, that change to add to it. It might have been girls soccer if I remember correctly, but. So I, I think that that's something to monitor. I, it's, it's not a, you know, a huge hit and maybe we can look at and Greg actually mentioned it before. Maybe there's a phase in, um, and we've also talked about looking at all of these fees. I know, um. We have discussed at the board level, um, what the overall impact is. We don't have a good number for that yet, but I think we would like to have that for. Uh, our talks at the, um, at the budget discussion, you know, it's hard to talk about reducing things and taking on additional budget. Uh, issues when we're going into a time where, as you just saw before, um, uh, as we were talking about, you know, the budget impact to the. Lost, lost number of students, but at the same time, um. We are a public school. We should serve every public school kid who walks in the door and we may need to figure out ways to do. Either as an intramural or it's another thing. I do know gym space has always been an issue when I coached. We had varsity practices started after our JV and our freshmen because we couldn't fit all the kids in the, in the one gym that we had to, to use. And so. I know that that's, that can be part of it, but we should also continue to find ways to get every kid who wants to participate, um, that opportunity.
Joe, I thought I know, Brandy, I'll beg this real quick. I just ran the numbers on my calculator. If we have five hundred kids participate at the high school at two hundred dollars. That creates about a hundred thousand dollars in revenue. Even if it's a board, we decided to move towards, you know, moving away from these fees, but somehow we still did the fees. If there was a person at the high school and, uh, I'm just thinking of Sarah Malone. I can't think of her married name now, but. She works in the counseling office at the high school. She's a great person. If you had somebody like that advocating all of our kids at the high school, if we could pay somebody part of their salary. They could be out there talking to those kids and making all the options available to those kids. I think they might look at that opportunity. So. I know that's a creative way to try to pay somebody's salary, but again, I think a lot of kids don't play because they don't know.
So, uh, we've got some, um, uncertainties about the financial impact. Um. And that kind of has always been one of the reasons we just don't tackle it. We just don't know. And that, we can keep doing that every year. Um, I'm wondering if we could put this into our budget process somehow to. And I don't know what we do with this now. We probably pass this now or next time tentatively or knowing that it may be revoked and that. Nobody should be counting on it necessarily, but we want a budget, assuming we keep it in budget, assuming we do a full drop or a half drop or whatever. Uh, somebody's gonna have to do some modeling for us so we know the impact, but that seems to me, they can be done as part of the budget process. Is that right?
That's correct. We can do some of those things.
Well, then I would like this, when we do drop this next time, are we dropping it next time? Is that the idea? This is the first.
So what I was just gonna say is, since there's no request for change in fee, you could approve these fees and then through the budgeting process, make a decision to. To waive those fees once it's figured out whether it's able to be paid for. So I think that, that, I think you're right to request to be part of the budget process. And I think we can still approve the fees like this.
So when we do the motion for this, I would like the motion to include a provision that we want information in the budget process and whether we. Can change the approach to those fees.
Ron, it sounds like you are formulating a motion right now.
Are we gonna do, can we do that? Are we doing that today? Is that what we want to do? I thought this was first reading.
You can, as, as you have said to other board members, you can always make a motion if you want to do that now. If you would like me to. Put that in the suggested motion for the next time when we were planning to approve it, that would be another way we could go for it as well.
I guess if there's no objection, we can just skip right to the. I guess if there's no objection, we can just skip right to the adoption.
Well, you can make the motion and we could discuss it.
All right, I'll move that.
The language and we can approve it. There's no rush, right? I mean. We were planning on approving it at the next meeting anyway.
Yeah, that's fine. I can do it that way.
Well, it would be one less thing on the agenda item for the next meeting.
All right, let me give a shot. I, you guys, these. Whoever speaks last convinces me, I guess. I recommend those Newburgh School Board of Directors approve the listed uh, fees for next year. With notice that we would like to review the athletic fees as part of the budgeting process.
I s- I second.
Okay, the motion and a second is their discussion.
The change I would like to see to that, you know, I've advocated for years now that I'd like to see us remove all our activity fees. Um, and so, you know, the first step to doing that is the same thing as we're talking about with athletic fees. Knowing what the number is that we're talking about. Um, you know, I don't know how much of a challenge that is for Nikki and Joe to put together that number, you know, how much. Going through the act they have to go through to get that needle out of there. So, you know, I'm hesitant to. Say I want that for the next meeting, but I would like to see us not just look at athletic fees, but, but all fees and we might need to do it. In a staged or a phased manner, but I'd like to know what that number is for, for all activity fees. So that no student has to um. Ask to participate. They can just sign up and do what they'd like to do.
Yeah, I agree with that, Bob. Some of those musical instrument rental fees can get pretty high and, um, you know, so. Athletic fees are certainly the highest, but, um, you know, we've got kids in multiple classes and renting an instrument and maybe playing one sport. I mean, it would. It could add up very quickly. Uh, any other discussion? Okay, with the motion and a second, all those in favor, please raise your hand. And all those opposed? Okay, we, it passes five to one with Director Woodruff as a no vote.
I think this is good though, Bob, because I think we, we can run the dry run through this. On the athletics and pay attention to the other issues too. I think. We need to get started somewhere.
Okay, let's move on to our OSBA convention reflections. And um, I know that Brian and Bob, you were unable to attend. I'm not, Dave, did you attend?
Yes.
Okay, so Rebecca, Dave, Ron and I attended and I'll open the floor for anyone to reflect on what they experienced. Okay, well, let's move on. No, I'm kidding. I know, it's like we have to think all the way back a week and a half, right?
It was a long day. But it was, it was a very good day. I, um, I went to the. It was fun to get into the different topics and the different tabs and, um. They had it very well organized, I thought. And I enjoyed the, the, um. The keynote address. From the guy who spoke last year's, at last year's convention. That was very well, um, received again. And I enjoyed the, um. The round, the round. Table talk with the other districts. And appreciated the, um. You, you heading it up.
And Joe, I forgot you were there as well, so feel free to jump in if there's anything. Uh, yeah, I thought it was good to connect with members in our region, um, and also I'd never used the Pathables. Um, site before, for a, a large convention and I found it was actually really. Easy to use and I was actually able to schedule a couple of breakout sessions with people that I specifically wanted to chat with, which I was excited about because. That's what I like about the convention is, is that sort of, you know, connecting and having those conversations. So, um. For a virtual platform, I think that, that was done fairly well.
I also thought it was done pretty well and not being as gregarious as Brandy, I thought I liked it just about as well as for Portland. It was a long day, but it was a long day sitting in my own, sitting right here, so. The one, I went to several sessions and I. Thought generally they were pretty good. The one I took a few notes on was the one about. Uh, board superintendent relationships, boards and all that stuff. And there were three notes. I, I wrote down from that, uh, that I thought. I would want to just raise for the board to be thinking about. Uh, the first one was Ken, they, they were talking about the stress that everybody's under. Or leadership and staff all the way down. And the question was whether boards can find ways to give district leadership and staff and or staff a break from the stress they're under this year. Nobody, I don't remember anybody having a golden idea about that, but just that, you know, to be looking for things. I. I don't know. Joe's been thinking about that ever since and has a whole list of things. Uh, I didn't come up with it yet. Five, just five? Okay, good. So, uh, definitely something that. Be worth having some kind of conversation about. The second one I wanted to mention was that they stressed how much positive feedback. Means to people. Somebody probably already know this, but it's, I'm, I'm a thoughtless person, so it was new to me. Positive feedback to superintendent, staff. Anybody that we see in making presentations, but also anything else we see. It's not our business to meddle in the administration of various school things, but if we're out of school and we see something doing, done well. Apparently it means a lot to people if a board member just says that was, just lets them know. And so I, not something I thought of as part of my job necessarily. I think I have said a few nice things, but I haven't been. In my nine years, I maybe have uncorked a thing or two that's nice. Uh, strong personal relationships with the board chair and the superintendent, the board, the chair and the superintendent. And they, uh, they were talking about, you know, just having time for people to chat. And actually get to know each other a little bit better and that this helps. Helps us all understand each other better and reduces friction. And I think that would be a great idea. And I come back and here we're organizing. Board, um, members meeting with the superintendent, which. Means that I didn't even have to bring this back because we're already trying to do something. Kind of the thing that's a little elusive. I mean, it's hard, there's, there are some. Kinds of frictions or barriers because we've got a public meeting laws, we just, they don't really want to have a bunch of balls in the background, but. I think the idea that we're doing right now of rotating groups, meeting with the board, uh, the superintendent somewhat regularly will help. Uh, but this is something that, uh, caught my eye is. You know, something I've always wished to have a better set of that kind of relationship, particularly above the superintendent. So not just for Joe, this goes back to previous superintendent. And, um. And, um, so to have that brought back up to mind and see if we can do something about it is good.
Yeah, and just to give audience members some background, um. I think we're starting, are we starting next month, Joe? December, okay. My meeting's not till June anymore, but no, it's okay. December, um, rotating groups of three board members. Um, meeting with the superintendent every couple of weeks just to help, um, those conversations to sort of. Happen between the board members on small, you know, in compliance with public meeting laws. That's why we're limited to three. Um, and also those conversations and relationships between board members to kind of, um, flourish a little bit in this time when we're not meeting in person. So, yeah. And actually, I. I got the idea from McMinnville. I didn't attend that session you went to. It was strictly, I'm honest, thank you McMinnville for sharing your ideas. It's been going well for them.
It was a good idea. I don't mind being redundant to it. Um, the, uh, it's a little, another thing on Joe's schedule. Which is one of the reasons I think we've been a little bit reticent not to clear up Joe's schedule, but I appreciate the effort and if it doesn't wear you out, I hope we can keep doing.
Yeah, I think it sounds great. Actually, I think it'll work out very well. And having rotating groups is nice. Um, I'll just make a quick comment. I actually, I attended several, of course, it was a long day, but I also didn't have to do parking and I didn't have to. Go find a lunch spot with everyone. So it actually, you know, you could do and sit and I went to several, one of them. It was the All Students Belong, um, which we have policy on, uh, coming up. I think it's next on our agenda, so. Uh, it was good to hear again, uh, kind of the policy implications for that and it was happening, so. Um, a lot of good stuff as always. I thought the pathable thing was, um, actually better than I expected. And, uh, the ability to schedule some meetings and to have some side chat going during the presentation. Uh, when they embedded the Zoom, I thought was, was, uh, actually pretty good. So. Yeah, it was overall good. It was a long day as well, but. Um, I think it worked out.
All right, any other thoughts or reflections?
I don't know if this is the right time to, to make notice. Of, of our chairman's appointment to the Oregon Department of Education advisor. Brandy Pinner has been appointed to that and I, I want to recognize her, her position. Or her appointment and we're how, how proud to have Newburgh represented at the state level.
Awesome. Thank you, Rebecca. Yeah. It's exciting to go to a meeting that I'm not running, so, and I don't have to vote. I just advise, so it's, I am quite excited about it. All right, any other thoughts on convention? Okay, let's go ahead and move on to, um, the two policies we have on our agenda. The first one up is A C B, All Students Belong. Uh, these are put in as a first read, so we're not taking action on them tonight, but, um, they're here for our information and. Any discussion or thoughts that anyone has.
I'm glad to see this, uh, policy come before us and. When the, we get to second reading, I will eagerly and proudly vote for it.
So I have a question. We're defining this thing called a bias incident, but it's unclear to me anywhere in the policy. What we're doing with that term that we've defined.
Joe, do you want to speak to that? Because I feel like it goes a little bit more into the A R.
And I even unmuted before I started talking. Yeah, so the A R actually will have, so we, uh, when we built some of these things into our. Code of Conduct, we, uh, decided to use the current complaint procedure that we have. Uh, one of the, uh, areas of discussion we had during our policy committee. Um, was that that doesn't necessarily, um, cover kind of all the bases that we would need for discrimination complaints. So. Uh, we will be bringing, uh, working on, uh, the development of, uh, an administrative regulation that would help us with that. So A C B A R. Uh, which is named lower in, uh, the complaint procedure. Uh, and that's something that, uh, we have not yet developed, but that would be a different kind of complaint procedure for, uh, a bias. Incident. And so that's why, uh, they're, they're defining it up there and then we would be using that same. That same language to process reports or complaints of bias incidents. So we'll be creating an A R that actually follows a slightly different set of. Steps, uh, for bias incidents. So that's why they're using that one there in the policy.
Is there? Is there a, um? Is there a, uh, I don't know, I'm trying to say this the right way, um. Are we gonna have like a set thing? Like I saw swastikas and that kind of stuff in there, you know, the Confederate flag? Or is it going to get more, um, up to the principal type thing? Are we gonna have a set, set of things like, say, okay, you just can't have a swastika? Which we've always kind of done at the high school. You know, when people did graffiti and stuff like that. Right, we take care of right away. Or is this going to be kind of an open-ended list? That's going to kind of move it around.
Well. Yeah, no, that's actually, that's a great question and I, I think that's important to talk about, uh, both limits and the expansion of. So there are some listed here. It's specifically about symbols of hate. And about expressing animus on the base of race, color, religion, gender identity, sexual orientation, disability, national origin. And they included some of them, uh, noose, swastika, Confederate flag. Um, but looking forward a little bit, there are, there could be other symbols. So the original case, uh, in front of the Supreme Court nineteen sixty-nine, I think it was Tinker. And I want to say it was versus Des Moines. That was about actually wearing black armbands, which were. Protesting, uh, the US involvement in the Vietnam War and actually used the peace symbol on them and they had the black things and the. Other black armbands and, um, they were, um. Uh, kicked out of school, uh, because, um, and so they actually went to, eventually ended up in the Supreme Court. And, uh, it was determined that those were not going to cause a significant disruption. I think that's one of the things that we. Uh, would be measuring any additional kind of things to that list. We've been talking about. Um, a significant disruption to school and you don't have to wait for the disruption to actually happen. It's not called significant, it's called substantial. You don't have to wait for it to actually happen in school. You can actually say that this is something that, um. You know, you could have a reasonable forecast of disturbances that, uh, they come in. Um, waving some kind of a thing that, uh, could cause that issue. So we've heard lots of different arguments about not having any limits whatsoever. I think it's hard when you make a just specific list, these are the only things. Um, but I, I can tell you that the. The things that we've had, the, the biggest concerns we've had from our school administrators. Um, have specifically been around things like this, the noose, the swastika Confederate flag, those, those come up all the time. Um, this was, uh, something that our, especially our secondary administrators brought to me a couple of, uh. Years ago, I started to talk about, we began to do is talk about some policy, um, then this policy came forward, uh, with that, so. Uh, it's really, it's not, well, it's not limited, uh, these kind of examples are the ones that, um, again, talks about substantial disruption. Or material interference and that comes directly from, um, that Supreme Court case of Tinker, um, and then a few others. Uh, that were, that happened along the way to support those in, in the Fourth Circuit.
And there's a couple of points too I wanted to make about that. Uh, one is that this language is in the code of conduct that we. As a board approved. So this would be a, now a policy movement as well, but it wouldn't, um. Necessarily be above or beyond what we're already in place. Um, the second thing too is that this was really student-led. This started from students reaching out to the governor and the Department of Ed. Saying we don't feel safe in our schools when we see these symbols. And that's huge. I think that should be huge to all of us as board members. You know, we are here to help ensure that each student. Uh, leaves our district with an ability to succeed in the world and if. They do not feel safe, that is sort of Maslow's hierarchy of needs, you know, they're not going to be able to excel. Um, if they're fearful in their classrooms. So the fact that it's student-led and, um, is a response to that. Um, I think it's really powerful.
So if we have, um, I'm just really curious about this because I mean, I think it's a. You know, I get the swastikas, I, I mean, I get all the, the Confederate flag stuff, I mean. If a, if a parent, say, comes on the, to, to campus and let's say they're new to our community. And. They have like a sticker in their window that says a Confederate flag, just say they have that. They don't know our rules from, from Adam and they pull onto our schools, but then a student sees that. I mean, there's a lot of different variances and I spent a lot of time in security outside and everything and. A lot of people do come onto the campuses at the school, especially the high school because it's a mobile. Mobile campus, um. I mean, uh, we're going to have to tighten that up a little bit on how some of those things work too, because what are we going to do if a student sees that? Yeah, I know before, you know, we'd have students at the high school, um, go too fast speed. You know, skip out on fourth period to get to lunch so they can get the McDonald's, you know, all those kinds of things and other kids were telling on them. Um, sometimes, so it's like. That's a tough one to kind of operate under because it might not be a student. Could be a parent, it could be a guardian, it could be a, a relative coming on the. The campus. I was just thinking of that when I was reading through this whole thing. And I just have to bring it up too. I mean, if there, there, in the past, there's been things like if people. You know, when it comes to politics, how's that going to work? You know, I mean, like we've just gone through a really rough patch of politics, so how's that going to work? When people express themselves. You know, through politics, um, are we going to limit that too? I mean, because some people look at a. A MAGA hat and they're, they're upset, you know, they don't, they don't like that. And then other people look at a Black Lives Matter. Thing and they're upset. So how do we? I just was curious how far this was going on that, that road because it, it, it's a big question for sure. You know, like we've gotten away from, you know, from. Our dress code's gotten looser and looser and looser, you know, as we've moved through the years. So how are we going to do that when kids wear certain things to school? I mean, fifteen years ago it was inappropriate. You know, dressed by kids, um, now, you know, it was. Not much to dress, I'll, I'll just put it that way. That kind of went past, you know, we got through that phase and. That wasn't a problem in the last number of years. That wasn't a problem in the last number of years. Um. Does that make any sense, Brandy?
I think so.
Yeah, I I wanna, yeah, there are a couple of parts, and I'm actually, I'm really glad that you brought that up, Dave, because I think those are important things. I I think first of all. Um, you often get the question of where does it end? You know, if it starts here, is there any, you know, kind of a cap on the kinds of things we we talk about? Um, and I think it's very specific in here to talk about symbols of hate, and I'm gonna go ahead and just use our what what we've just been discussing over the last couple of months. Somebody shows up with a Trump. T-shirt. That is not ostensibly a symbol of hate. Whether people agree or disagree with um their political opinion, it's not a symbol of hate. If they show up with something, however, that is a Confederate flag or a swastika, um that is a specific symbol of hate. And so I I think it's important to delineate. It's the same thing. Uh, I heard an argument today. What what happens if somebody is offended by the cross? Well, cross is not used as a symbol of hate. You may or may not agree with or believe in the same religion, but you're not using it as a way to. Uh, denigrate somebody else, right? Uh, and in the same way, the the MAGA hat that's been in the news, of course, to talk about. Um, and I'll I'll go back to what we said before, what I said before. Um, which was we we don't always agree with everybody's public political opinion. Um, but if they're not being used as a way to uh as a symbol of hate, then we're not gonna be talking about it in this poll in this policy. So this policy has some limits around that. Sometimes the Confederate flag comes up as something controversial um in policy when you start to regulate it. Back to your original question about somebody coming on campus, part of the reason you have a an administrator um regulation is you help people understand. Here's how we'll go through that process. Often, some of those things are solved with a conversation, like when somebody is um having a big cigar out in front of the. Um, you know, under the, under the uh awning there at the high school, like, you know, actually, we don't allow that. Um, and it's the same thing with, you know, any kind of things that you can't do. You know what? Actually, you can't sell wine in the parking lot or. You know, and sometimes you solve those with a conversation, like, hey, you know, actually, we have this policy that you can't put that. Sometimes you post those things. Please pick up your. Uh, your dog poop, pick up, you know, th- those kinds of things that happen. Um, so I think that's important and and just busting somebody who comes on the campus who doesn't know about those things. I mean, I think we, you know, I'm sure uh Dave out there in the parking lot, you probably had a lot of conversations, like, you know, actually. We need to go slower because kids are out here walking around and and it's not, it's not safe for you to drive through here uh like a crazy person. So. Um, I I actually think that this policy's got some good limits in it. Um, it's very specific about that. And if we run into problems. That's when we adjust it either through the policy or through the administrative regulation. Um, I don't think uh we're putting something in to go snoop around and try to find everything that we don't like um about. A certain group. We're really trying to watch out for kids who um react or um, you know, have these feelings around um true symbols of hate. And I think we can agree at least on those three that are listed there. Um, and then we have to just be careful about what we consider symbols of hate and what we consider differences in in um political. Um, leanings, you know, whichever uh way uh you decide you want to go. Those are disagreements, but they aren't necessarily symbols of hate. And I think that's. When we get into emotional spaces around um like the um the rally that happened, there's a lot of emotion around that, but you know, there's a difference between. Um, not liking and not feeling safe and also symbols of hate. And there there's a pretty clear delineation. Whether we like it or not, or whether it feels good or not, um, I think that that's a really important concept to to keep in mind that we're really trying to limit this to very specific. Very obvious um symbols of hate. But I appreciate you asking those questions, Dave, because I think those are on a lot of people's minds um about this policy and about. Uh, the restriction of uh free speech and things like that. So that's that's important.
I I want to say that I'm gonna support this policy, but I do not share your optimism. We do have to do something to make sure that's yes, access to school is free for everybody and that it's safe, felt safe to as many as everybody. I don't think there's a big problem with the three that are listed here. Although I don't see that there's a bright line that we're gonna be able to implement. There are people still who could defend the Confederate flag as not being a symbol of hate. They don't mean to hate anybody by it. But we put this on this list because there's a substantial number of people who do see it as a symbol of hate. They don't see why anybody would do it otherwise. Then to say, boy, it would be bad, nice to go back to slavery or something. And so since there are so many, we will rule the people who protest that it's an innocent symbol. It's not, it doesn't say who has to decide whether it's a symbol of hate or not. It doesn't say that we have a vote and a majority of people decide, or it doesn't say that there has to be a certain percentage of people who see it as a. As a symbol of hate, even though a lot of people defend it. I could see somebody arguing that the crescent, that the moon and crescent uh symbol of Islam is a symbol of hate. Because they understand Islam to be. Stained, I guess, by Islamic terrorists. And they would say, it's a symbol of hate to me. I lost somebody in New in New York City, they might say. I didn't personally, but they could say that. It's a symbol of hate to me. Or there there are people, I have read them, who do see the cross as a symbol of hate. They see missionaries as hateful. They see expansion imperialism of the under the cross as hateful. And who have had their own experiences in churches perhaps. Who see the cross as a symbol of hate. And they're gonna say, no, it's a symbol of hate to me. And I don't think we have an articulable principle that says how often that has to happen before we say, okay, fine, it's a symbol of hate to you. So we have to take it off. You have been expressing confidence. That we'll be able to tell because of how the person wearing the shirt or the MAGA hat. My son Ben had a MAGA hat when we went to see, went to DC. He thought it was funny to wear one to DC. My son Ryan, who lives in DC, says, you better not wear that in this block. There's a lot of African Americans on this block. They're gonna just see it as a symbol of taunting and hate. So on that block. A majority of the people on that block. Would probably determine it kind of a symbol of hate. If you went two miles further into a different neighborhood, they wouldn't interpret it that way. I don't see how we're gonna be able to draw a clear line. So this is gonna be a problem. I think we have to adopt it anyway. I think actually we're required to adopt it. I think I would adopt it if we're not required to adopt it. Because we have to do something to uh give ourselves a tool to deal with the clear symbol of hate. But what we'll mean is we're gonna have a lot of conversations. It's possible that we will have a lot of conversations about cases that are not clear. And that where people will be insisting that we make the wrong decision, no matter what the decision we we make is. This is, this is gonna be a stress on the relationships on this board possibly, which are already not perfect. And so I think what it means, if we're gonna, since we have to adopt this, and what since we're gonna adopt it, I think. Is that uh that just puts more stress on us to work on our relationships so that we don't break our board the next time one of these comes up. That in when we realize we're not gonna agree, we're able to do this and still respect each other, that we handle that in the kinds of ways that allow us to do that. So uh, I'm I'm gonna vote for this, but I'm not happy to be voting for this in that sense. I think it's gonna be a source of. It's very likely to be a source of very difficult questions about free speech and so forth. And one more thing I'll say about that. There is right now no constitutional grounds for shutting somebody down on basis of hate speech. Uh, it's part of free speech protections. And um, uh. I would think the most likely outcome of appeal to this to Supreme Court is that the whole thing may be ruled unconstitutional. I don't know. Nevertheless. Because we need to do something, now it may not, we have, do have the state, the the schools uh disruptive disruption of school things, and we have had. Otherwise, we'd be free speech protected that are not in the context of the school. So there's a little footnote at the bottom here that suggests we document. That we have an expectation or that we recognize there's a reason. We're not just guessing. And if we don't have that documentation, we have a very in a less strong position. So. We can help ourselves if we actually do some documentation of why these three symbols, even though they're on the list of mandates. Why these three symbols would uh do disruption, and that might help us resolve later questions, so we can point to them as being like this. Yeah, I don't think it will follow all the questions, though. It's just, it's gonna be an issue for us.
It may be, and there there are other cases as well that are not listed in your policy. There's Hard Work versus Hayward uh in twenty thirteen. Um, that came up in the Fourth Circuit decision about um free speech. Uh, and this came back to again referencing the Tinker substantial disruption test. There's another one in two thousand, the West versus Derby Unified School District. Um, and uh, so I think that you'll find that there's, there is precedent in more than just the Supreme Court case. Um, I also, yeah, I also think that will, yeah. Well, it actually, they are, they are on about the restriction of free speech. So whether whether or not the the district was in in the right or the wrong to restrict them. Um, and so, yeah, so we have that. We also um. Part of the AR development and having um a bias incident uh complaint procedure. Is that we go through a process of that, it gets documented. Um, if it were to come to the board, it would be because that the person did not agree with the decision made. Either at the school level um or at the superintendent level, and it would come before you, and that would be, you know, part of that conversation about determining that and determining context. We have not had a huge amount of those things come forward uh for you, not just in this case, but in other ones. Um, so.
So of course, I would find, I I would find a constitutional law case coming from the board kind of fascinating, but I don't think anybody else on the board should take comfort in that.
Hey, Brandy. Hey, Brandy.
Yeah, Dave.
Um, just, you know, maybe for another time, you know, to put on the agenda to talk about it, but I mean. What Ron and Joe are talking about right now. When we just went through the Trump rally. I think. As we go through things like that that are hard. What's best for us as a board to support Dr. Joe? Um, I think again, it showed that we have a um. A little bit of weakness on the board. Um. We had a staff member. You know, talk to me about not liking my response. I'm not talking about just a person out there who doesn't tend to school board meeting like this, is a knowledgeable person, but. I think, you know, as we come through like that President Trump rally, how best can the board serve? The district office and Dr. Joe coming through something like that when we get into the next meeting. And we do make comments, whether they're good, bad, or whatever. Um, I think it goes back to sometimes a lot of people don't know how the board works, what our limitations are. And then even what we can do to support Dr. Joe, because we do enough to make his job hard anyway. Um, so if we're making uh statements, you know, and we all made different things to say. That are we making his job harder? I think so two parts. One is we need to talk about that as a board. What are we doing? To help our superintendent and then B, how are we communicating even to our staff? You know, like, do they really know what the school board covers? Because that if that thing went sideways, you know, and there there would have been violence. You know, there was enough rumors and craziness going on on social media anyway. Uh, I would hate to think that the board would add to that if we we shouldn't be. So I hope that makes sense, but down the road, I'd like to have that discussion where we're trying to help our superintendent not hinder him.
Yeah, I think it's it's certainly valid and something we should always have on our minds as we operate as board members. And I think, you know, my hope is one small step will be these rotating three-member meetings with Joe, because we'll be able to have a little more casual conversation. Um, you know, we won't be in a business meeting. Um, and those are questions, you know, like, for example, when Joe and I meet and Ron for the agenda items. You know, I would say, okay, what else is there? You know, like, just what else is going on? Um, just to kind of. Give the superintendent and Greg quite honestly a chance to say, okay, well, this is what's kind of weighing on my mind, or this is what I'm, you know, really dealing with right now. So that we can have a better understanding of what it is um that they're experiencing. And um, I agree with you, Dave, and I I, you know, the only thing I can keep going back to is dialogue, right? We need to keep having conversations. Um, and keep everybody in the loop like we have in our board superintendent working agreement. You know, we have those parameters there. Because it does foster relationship and conversation. Um, but I think you're right. I I think it's something that we just constantly need to be. Keeping as a priority. All right, we're going a little bit behind schedule here. So um, let's get on to the next policy. Everybody has this for two weeks to read over. If there's questions or if you need more information, you know, reach out to Joe, reach out to me. Um, do your research if you need to. Okay, next up, policy JHH, the student suicide prevention uh policy. Ron, would you like to speak to this one? You are the presenter on here and. Policy Committee.
So uh, this is a statewide mandated plan uh uh policy again. Uh, I think we have the option of adding or whatnot, but we have to have this a policy like this according to state. And dealing with suicide prevention, there's an act that I think it cites, it says why we have to do this, uh, one of those RRS is down there. I think if I recall our conversation correctly, that this is generally stuff that we are doing. There isn't, there wasn't anything, Joe, was there, that we're already doing in this policy? Is that right?
That's correct. Uh, and I also have, uh, we have Luke Neff on the line as well. If we want to ask specific questions about that, we did discuss this. So we we actually do. All of these uh things, we don't have it all packaged into one grand plan. And I don't know, maybe Luke, you want to add just a little detail to that. Uh, about the stuff we talked about.
Yeah, absolutely. So um, I have now reviewed um four or five of their districts' plans that they've put together. And just kind of check them against the documents that we already have in place. And we do, we have um. All of it. As far as I can tell, there will be a few things we need to iron out in terms of making sure that we're all aligned across all our schools. Um, I know there's a piece also, um. Sorry, Nikki, that we will probably need to just work on a little bit of a budget to make sure that we can continue to support the necessary trainings into the future. Um, so there are, there are some details we'll need to figure out, but um as far as the scope of the plan goes, yeah, we're doing this. And we we have the documents.
There is a um, a dis- difference between this text and the one I think we proved at the. Policy Committee. Uh, the second paragraph was a bracketed optional paragraph, and I think we decided to leave it out. Uh, so we're recommending that the second paragraph not be there. This is.
Yeah, I I did send that out to all of our board members and updated the packet on the website that has the correct version, which deletes that line.
Yeah, okay. So it was a matter of communication between Greg and us.
And what was the, what was the thought process behind removing that paragraph?
It's a made paragraph. It doesn't actually tell us we have to do anything and it kind of clutters it up. That's the main reason. Uh, we already have it, right? It does. We don't need the policy to have that, right?
Right, and it doesn't exclude the district from consulting with people.
And I would just chime in to say that we've actually done quite a bit of that process work already and uh community engagement. Um, as we've developed our uh suicide prevention plans. So while we haven't done it specifically to support this board policy. A lot of that has happened already.
Yeah, I don't think there's anything else that uh I think to report from our meeting unless uh Becker or Brandy has something.
No.
This, by the way, was tacked on to our ongoing review. We have lots of policies coming your way eventually. So I know you guys have been pining for that. It's coming.
Yeah, these were the two big ones. Took up a lot of policy committees' time last week for good reason. All right. Well, again, this isn't an action item. It's um there for a first read, so spend the next couple of weeks looking it over. And if there's questions. Um, please reach out to district staff um or myself, and uh we can get those answered. All right, thank you, Luke, and Ron. Good job. Don't worry. That's okay. You know, you're practicing. Uh, the vice, the vice chairmanship will be up in uh July, so. Reminding you of that, like, the the chair position will be available in July, so it's good. All right, next up, we just have the final item on our agenda, which is just kind of reviewing future meeting items. Um, reminder, in December, there's only one meeting um on the eighth due to the holidays. Um, and Greg, we've got the asterisk on the mental health and wellness report. Is that because it's a holdover from last year or is that a tentative?
Uh, the asterisk is because, yes, last year it was one of the requested ones by the board, so those have just carried over from last year as well. And uh, I know that Dr. Neff has already been working on that, so it's on schedule for the eighth.
Perfect. Okay, so we'll have that, our monthly financials, um, school health service grant. We'll start talking about the authorization, um, the sale of bonds. Uh, we did the athletic fees. We've got the calendar um and the budget committee members. So, and we'll have a set of policies to approve. So. In the meantime, everybody have a great Thanksgiving and stay healthy, and uh we'll see you all back here on the eighth.